Report. I will adjourn the closed session at 6:00 PM and call the regular city council of the city council, regular meeting of the city council to order on Wednesday, November the 13th at 6:01 PM. Mr. Clerk, if you could read the Metro replay schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, November 15th at 1:00 PM, pardon me, and Sunday, November 17th at 9:00 AM. This being closed captioned and will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. Speaker timer on the podium counts down the individual speaker time remaining and will turn yellow after the first two minutes have passed, indicating one minute remains to summarize comments. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, provided the assistant city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, roll call, please.
For the roll call, council member when?
Here.
Council member Detrick.
Here.
Council member Sueon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here.
Next item.
Take us on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, we have the fire chief here, so let's pick on him. Lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where its stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Next item is moment of silence. The city council, at every regular city council meeting, would like to invite the public to join us in a moment of silence, please. If you could join us. Thank you very much. Next item.
Take us on to Section 2, Approval of the Agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose abstention. Next item.
Under Section 3 for the closed session, we have no closed session items, which leads to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is a presentation of recognitions to the Laguna Youth Baseball League eight-year-old, nine-year-old, and 12-year-old teams for outstanding performance in 2019 regional and state championships. And I believe for a lot of the teams, they might be out in the foyer, so we'll give some time, but I think we're going to ask them to come into the chamber and see if we can get them up to the, up at the speaker podium.
Lot of purple. Yeah, Nick, go ahead. All right. Is it just, this is just eight?
Eight-year-olds.
Okay. Wait, everybody, everybody's in here now? Okay. Great. Oh, they're piling in. Oh, bring them in. They can break, they can come in. You want, you want to bring them in? Look at all the purple. Ah, I love those uniforms, guys. Hey, how you doing? Yeah. Good to see you. All right. These are the eight-year-olds, right? Okay. Well, look, a lot of you guys have heard by now about the, all the good things about sports, teaching us teamwork, teamwork, character, perseverance, but sometimes wins just feel good, right, guys?
Yeah.
Yeah. And you know, with this much success, we could not let it go unnoticed across all three age groups here, eight, nine, and 12-year-olds. We had to come down and just show how proud all of us are, the city council, the city. I know you know your parents and your coaches are proud of you. You guys did a fantastic job this year. Coaches, parents, thank you so much for your support and contributions to the community. All this stuff is volunteer. We know you guys put in so much work yourself, getting equipment, spending all the hours on, after-hours after work and on the weekends. So thank all of you for doing this for our community. So for the first one, we've got the eight-year-olds. I'm going to say a few words, but I definitely want to invite representatives from each team up, and then we'll bring our, my council colleagues down here. We'll get a couple pictures, okay? So the first one, for the under-eight, dictate the pace, stay scrappy. That's Tim Uels, the model of Tim Uels, the manager there. You guys, Jason Kowalski, James Lutz, Jason Morgan Voice, again, fantastic job you guys this year. We have here today, Adam, why don't you raise your hands when I call you out? Adam? All right. Aiden? AJ? Brady? Cash? Connor? Easton? Ethan? Jacob? Logan? Luciano? And Tyler? You guys, awesome. You guys did such a great job. You guys were the first eight-year-old team, All-Star team, to go all the way in Laguna Youth Baseball. Great job, you guys. I can't wait to see what you guys do next year. Come on up, coaches, let's go. Round of applause, please. If I could find my, if I could find my, both council members to come down too, could do a picture and then.
Tim, nice to meet you, Tim. Yeah. Great. Ethan in front. Brady, come back here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, can we have you guys all kind of scoot this way? We'll stand in front of the grown-ups. They're probably.
Yeah, my friend, man. Yeah, yeah.
I'm not one of you. Just want to, to record.
They're going to leave us tickets.
All right.
All right, you guys, ready? All right, there might be a few cameras, so. Just look at them on. One, two, three. Awesome. That is the thing.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Yeah. First off, I want to start by thanking the city council for having us here this evening. You know, these young athletes don't even know what they accomplished being eight and nine-year-olds. I'm sure the 12s are just beginning to realize what a big feat it is to win year in and year out. These guys just go, work hard, have no idea. So thank you, guys, for having us this evening. Also, I think it's important to note, you know, before each game, you know, you get together, need a little huddle, a little pep talk, you know? We break on LYB team, and there is a reason for that. Each one of these kids here represent every volunteer in the league, every parent, everything that goes into Laguna Youth Baseball. It's not purple, it's not gray, it's not just each individual team right here. These kids represent LYB as a whole, so, and they did it very well. Thank you. All right. Next up, we've got the under-12 purple team. It's a little bit tall. We have to go in front this time. So these guys were just the second 12-year-old team from Laguna Youth Baseball to win the NorCal State Championship back-to-back. They won 13 straight Cal Ripken games and finished 4-0 in the pool play at Pacific Southwest Regionals. They outscored their opponents 159-66 in the season and finished with a .342 team batting average. Ten different players contributed to the mound on pitching. You guys only allowed four total runs in five games at the Pac-Southwest Regional. Yeah, it's pretty cool. Yeah. You done, you guys. No, you didn't bring home the championship this time, but you guys, you guys competed against, and the guys you, you lost to ended up being the championship, so, you know, that's a testament to the competition you guys were facing. I want to congratulate coaches Mike Cody, Kevin Eroldi, apologize if I messed that up, CJ Frank, and Mike Pott. Thanks again, coaches, for contributing to all this and giving these guys a great season. You guys want to come on up? I asked my colleagues to come on down again.
Same drill as the last team. You guys can kind of move towards the center.
I think you guys are too tall. Let's squeeze in, let's squeeze in. All right. I know, I should, a little tiny. Am I blocking you or am I standing right in the middle? No? Okay. Can you see me?
Okay, you guys, ready? One, two, three. Yep, sorry.
Okay, let me get one, guys. On three. One, two, three. All right. Everyone here. I'd like to thank the city council for inviting us tonight. This has been an outstanding honor to bring all three teams in, which says a lot about our league. Very proud of these young men. Many of them have been playing All-Stars for five or six years, either on the purple or the gray team, but like Coach Uels said, it's all about LYB. It's not about purple and gray, it's about representing the league and our community. And these guys did an awesome job. They finished third in the Pacific Southwest Regional, but the great thing was, as we mentioned, they're just the second 12-year-old team to ever win back-to-back state championships, which is quite an accomplishment. We sent, we sent a couple teams on to the World Series, and these boys were very close to doing it, but either way, we're very proud of their accomplishments and looking forward to what they do now at the middle school and, of course, the high school, and hopefully the collegiate hope as well, because I think these are great baseball players and looking forward to their growth. So thank you for having us, we appreciate it.
Yeah. Job, you guys. All right. We got the nine-and-under purple. How you doing, guys? All right. This team, turning from their talented eight-year-olds, their high expectations, they had a 31-0 record. Wow. Back-to-back state champions. 2019 Pac-Southwest Regional champs. Played six tournaments, like similar to our '08s, and then won them all. Combined record over two years, 56-4. And the highlight, because of this recent win, you guys are now in the berth of the 2020 Cal Ripken World Series in Florida. You guys are cleaning up, combined batting average of over 500. Average winning margin was 11.2 runs per game. Outstanding, you guys. I also want to recognize and thank your coaching staff, which is Rob Meyer, Julius Barber, Dan DeLeon, and your manager, Tony Eddy. Where's Tony at? All right. Come on over. One more time, guys and gals. I was hoping you guys just stay down here.
Okay, ready? Takes one big step left. Got it. All right. One last one. Oh, sorry. Okay. One, two, three. Yep, that's for the newspapers. It's not right here.
First want to say thank you to City Elk Grove, all council members, for allowing us to be here tonight. We appreciate it. It's our second time here, gets better every year. We are super excited for our upcoming trip in August to Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, where we're hoping to represent Laguna Youth Baseball and City of Elk Grove and bring it home. We don't really like to lose, so we are setting our goals to go out and probably try and bring it home as best we can. Tough to say anything bad about this group. They're, they're a solid group of kids, they're a real great group of teammates. We don't have a couple guys here tonight, but we played very well all year. We played with class, we represented the city of Elk Grove as well as Laguna Youth Baseball, and that's kind of what we, we push, is that at the end of the day, when all these places like Hawaii and Hanford, and they all ask us, "Where are you guys from?", we don't say Laguna all the time, we always usually say, you know, "It's in Elk Grove." It's in Elk Grove, so. Look for us to come back maybe right after August next year. We're hoping to be, as you can tell, I'm pretty, I'm pretty intent on going out there and winning that thing. But again, real good season, 31-0 this year, same group of kids as we've had last year, great coaching staff, they really outperformed what we thought they were going to do this year. So again, want to say thank you to all the City of Elk Grove and all council members, and looks like we're going to see you again next year.
Takes us on to Item 4.2, which is Future Forward Youth Marijuana Prevention Campaign by the Sacramento County Coalition for Youth.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Lee, council members. My name is Joelle O'Rourke.
And my name is Karen Polito, and we are part of the Sacramento County Coalition for Youth.
So on behalf of the Sacramento County Coalition for Youth, we're here tonight to thank you, to say thank you to the Elk Grove City Council for not allowing recreational marijuana dispensaries in the city of Elk Grove. The Sacramento County Coalition for Youth was created in 2015 to create community solutions around youth alcohol use. But two years ago, with the passage of Prop 64 and the impending opening of marijuana dispensaries in the city of Sacramento, the county thought, "We need to do something else", and so provided some dollars to our coalition to create a youth marijuana prevention campaign.
So there's a lot of information about marijuana, but very little is specific to today's marijuana. How it affects youth differently from adults, or information on prevention strategies. Young people are getting a lot of messages, but rarely the most updated information on the law. How today's marijuana potency is much higher than even 10 years ago, and how high potency drug affects a young person's developing brain. Youth also need tools and resources encouraging them to make good decisions for their future.
So the coalition created the Future Forward Campaign to meet those specific needs, to give youth the best information that we have so they can apply it to the decisions they make for their future. We try to be everywhere with our campaign, so not just to get the word out about prevention, but also to remind youth and adults that marijuana is not safe for youth use, and there are choices, and we want youth to make the best choice so they can have a strong future. We want youth to consider who they want to be, what they want for their future, and what will help them get there and what won't.
And how did we do that? Well, we were at town hall meetings, and there's online information, including educational modules for parents, there are handouts, we're at PSAs, TVs, movie theaters, billboards, transit signs, and more. Youth not only attended and participated in these events and projects, but we were the instrumental in creating the concepts and direction of this campaign.
So one of the things we're finding when we're out in the community is how little people really know, and so one of the things that we really want to do is provide some data points and education. We provided a handout for you each up there, but some things that we just really want to share with folks are that even low levels of marijuana use for a young person one or two times can affect the developing teenage brain in the area of processing and memory. And then also, just a study that recently just came out, talks about living near marijuana dispensaries make youth more likely to use it, which sounds like a, duh, of course it does, but it's one of those studies that comes out that helps us say, "Look, there's data behind making this choice." So we, again, we want to say thank you for not opening dispensaries in our city. I'm a citizen of Elk Grove as well as part of this coalition, and so it matters to me, and you're in good company, that approximately 80% of the other cities in California also made this choice.
As youth, your greatest assets, we deserve to grow up safely, and your decision to not open dispensaries continues to create that safe place for us, and it is our mission of the Sacramento County Coalition for Youth to minimize youth access to marijuana. So less dispensaries equals less marijuana to youth access. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and you know, since Joelle, I have you here, I just want to highlight the work that you've done, particularly in Elk Grove for our youth. Friday Night Live and Club Live and the numerous amount of youth development activities is, you know, very appreciated, and, you know, you continue your work, and I think that this council is very supportive of the work that you guys do, so thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the next item.
That'll take us to Item 4.3, which is the Fiscal Year 2020 Budget Video and Budget Brochure.
Shay, did you come back for your birthday just to give this presentation tonight?
No better way to spend it, right?
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Thank you. Greetings, Mayor and Council. Wanted to take a minute to promote our new Fiscal Year 1920 Budget Video and Budget Fact Sheet. So earlier this year in June, council unanimously adopted a budget for the Fiscal Year 1920 year, a balanced and healthy budget. So every year, the Budget Division and the Public Affairs Division collaborate together to make a video and a fact sheet to promote and provide information to residents and to staff on what's in the coming year. So this year, both the video and the fact sheet brochure were released in September and have been promoted on YouTube and Facebook and other social media platforms. So first, I'd like to thank Kristen and Lupe and her team for all the hard work they put in every year on these two items. The Budget Fact Sheet brochure itself should be in front of you folks, and then also there's a stack in the back of the room for any folks that want to pick that up. So as I mentioned, the video and the fact sheet were released in September, so one of the easiest places to find the video is on our city website, and it's in various places, but its home lives in government, and then hovering in government, over in finance, and then in budget. So it's on our budget webpage, and you can find the video right here, which is a direct link to YouTube, and then also electronic copy of the fact sheet via this link. And without further ado, I'd like to go ahead and play the video.
As your Elk Grove City Manager, my staff and I are responsible for preparing a balanced budget that provides the people, programs, and services that support the city's high quality of life. Like most households, we must balance our income and expenses with the city's wants and needs. Last year was a busy construction year for the city, and the next two years maintain that momentum, with roadway and infrastructure improvements on the horizon that will help Elk Grove residents to travel and connect within the community. Here's a glimpse at some of the projects we're working on. In Fiscal Year 2019-20, the city will continue with the construction of several capital projects. Oasis Park, the animal shelter, the community and senior center will all be completed, and construction on the Civic Center's nature area is also expected in 2020. Next summer, construction will start on improvements to Old Town that include Phase 2 amenities at the Old Town Plaza and new roadway and infrastructure improvements along Railroad Street. Camber Road is also planned for reconstruction from Lent Ranch Road to Big Horn Boulevard. This work moves us one step closer to connecting this route with Interstate 5 as part of the Capital Southeast Connector project.
The City of Elk Grove operates on a fiscal year calendar that projects revenues and anticipates expenses from July 1st to June 30th. The city will operate under a total adopted budget of $291 million for Fiscal Year 2019 to 2020, and projects a total budget of $209 million for Fiscal Year 2020 to 2021. The primary reason for the decrease is the spending on and completion of capital projects that are planned and budgeted for in Fiscal Year 2019 to 2020. Unlike a household budget, the city relies on two distinctly different types of income or revenue referred to as general and restricted funds. Let's start with the general fund. The city council determines how to spend general fund money, and the general fund budget must be balanced each year. Public safety, code enforcement, economic development, special projects and events, and most of the city staff are funded through the general fund. Revenues deposited into the general fund primarily come from sales tax, property and utility user taxes, transient occupancy taxes, and property taxes provided by the state in lieu of vehicle license fees. Not all services delivered in Elk Grove are provided by the city. Your property tax dollar is shared proportionately among several agencies serving our community. The city receives approximately 2.3 cents of each property tax dollar for Fiscal Year 2019 to 2020, and will receive 2.9 cents of each property tax dollar in Fiscal Year 2020 to 2021. Parks and recreation, fire, education, water, and sewer services are provided by other agencies with their own governing boards, administrative staffs, and operating budgets. Each of these agencies receives a share of your property tax dollar. 60% of the city's property tax share generated from within the city's 2001 boundaries is currently given to the county of Sacramento under a process called revenue neutrality. Revenue neutrality is an agreement dating back to the city's incorporation that gradually reduces the county's share of property taxes based on the corresponding decrease in county services over time. Elk Grove's revenue neutrality agreement with the county expires in Fiscal Year 2025 to 2026, 25 years following incorporation. Other revenue comes from user fees collected for city services such as garbage and recycling, transit, and drainage. Money collected for these services may only be used to provide the service for which they are collected. These are called restricted funds. There are several sources for restricted funds that dictate how and where city money can be spent. Restricted funds are primarily collected through taxes and fees. These funds are earmarked for a specific purpose or project. For instance, money generated through the gas tax and Measure A can only be used on roadway-related infrastructure and maintenance. Other special taxes, such as Melrose or special assessment taxes, may appear on your property tax bill. These taxes were voter-approved for a specific area within the city and can only be spent on maintenance, operations, or capital in that area. Developer impact fees paid by new development can only be spent on capital projects such as civic buildings, transportation improvements, and parks. For details on the city's budget, please visit ElkGroveCity.org/budget.
So, thank you for watching. So as you saw, the video goes over the city's funding sources, current infrastructure projects, the major ones, and then also services the city provides. The brochure provides further background information on those topics, like how the budget aligns with the city council goals, where general fund money comes from, and where general fund money goes, and also more information on upcoming major capital improvement program highlights, and then the status of our current pension fund. So for any further information or questions on these two items, feel free to contact me, but otherwise, that's it for me.
Good job.
Thank you, Shay. Yep, very good. Thank you, Shay.
Happy 21st birthday. All right.
Nice job narrating the, Jason.
All right, let's move to the next item.
Takes us to Section 5, Public Comment. Members of the audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public
agencies with their own governing boards, administrative staffs, and operating budgets. Each of these agencies receives a share of your property tax dollar. 60% of the city's property tax share generated from within the city's 2001 boundaries is currently given to the county of Sacramento under a process called revenue neutrality. Revenue neutrality is an agreement dating back to the city's incorporation that gradually reduces the county's share of property taxes based on the corresponding decrease in county services over time. Elk Grove's revenue neutrality agreement with the county expires in fiscal year 2025 to 2026, 25 years following incorporation. Other revenue comes from user fees collected for city services such as garbage and recycling, transit, and drainage. Money collected for these services may only be used to provide the service for which they are collected. These are called restricted funds. There are several sources for restricted funds that dictate how and where city money can be spent. Restricted funds are primarily collected through taxes and fees. These funds are earmarked for a specific purpose or project. For instance, money generated through the gas tax and Measure A can only be used on roadway-related infrastructure and maintenance. Other special taxes such as Melrose or special assessment taxes may appear on your property tax bill. These taxes were voter-approved for a specific area within the city and can only be spent on maintenance, operations, or capital in that area. Developer impact fees paid by new development can only be spent on capital projects such as civic buildings, transportation improvements, and parks. For details on the city's budget, please visit elkgrovecity.org/budget.
So, thank you for watching. So as you saw, the video goes over the city's funding sources, current infrastructure projects, the major ones, and then also services the city provides. The brochure provides further background information on those topics, like how the budget aligns with the city council goals, where general fund money comes from, and where general fund money goes, and also more information on upcoming major capital improvement program highlights, and then the status of our current pension fund. So for any further information or questions on these two items, feel free to contact me, but otherwise, that's it for me.
Good job.
Thank you Shay. Very good. Thank you Shay.
Happy 21st birthday. All right.
Nice job narrating the, Jason.
All right, let's move to the next item.
Take us to section five, public comment. Members of the audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item.
Okay, first speaker we have is Bonnie Stensler. Calling Bonnie is Mark Graham.
I'm Bonnie Stensler, resident and board member at Del Webb Glenbrook. And I was here last month to thank Chief Albright. Tonight, I'm here to thank Mayor Lee and Jason Bearman, who were kind enough to come out to our community on November 6 and deliver a very interesting and very informative presentation, answered tons of questions from our residents, and we really appreciate that and just wanted to let you know. And we'll be providing a lot of the information you gave our residents in our monthly newsletter. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jason.
You're welcome, Bonnie. And you know, the truth is, we really do enjoy coming out, being that the questions that I received was really good questions, you know, questions that would provide me a speaking opportunity to talk about some of the things that we're doing. And of course, and I do appreciate you giving all the hard questions to Jason, because you know, he answered them before you left, so I'd be happy to come out again, so just let us know.
We will do that. And Stephanie, I think you're on our 2020 radar. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mark Graham. Following Mark Graham is Kathleen Collins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham. Somebody should try and prevent children in Elk Grove from vaping. It is a big, big deal. I'll tell you two ingredients in the vaping, you know, products from Juul and so on, nicotine and propylene glycol. Anybody that's had a colonoscopy has probably consumed about a gallon of water with propylene glycol mixed into it. So imagine smoking that. Okay, I'm asking the city to do something about that, or I'm asking if you are. Also, back to the usual subject, cell antenna policy, the city has to keep abreast with the changing federal regulatory environment, and it is changing. Wanted to bring to your attention a case that you may not be aware of. United Kewa Band of Cherokee Indians in Oklahoma versus Federal Communications Commission. This was decided, I think, in early October, but you can find it, and I will email you about this. The long story short is that Federal Communications Commission had taken a look at the National Environmental Policy Act, and you know, they're in a big fat hurry to force cell antennas on every city and county and every resident, and they looked at it and they said, oh, this might be an obstacle to what we want to do. And so they passed an order called 18-30, and the purpose of that order was to exempt the entire nationwide major federal policy action of cell antennas from the environmental review required by National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA. So, the plaintiffs in this court, in this case, said, you cannot do that. FCC does not have the power to do that. And the long story short is that the court agreed. So where does, how does this affect you? It would be premature for the city to issue any permits until the environmental review that's required by the National Environmental Policy Act has been completed. That review has not even been started yet. So I'm asking the council to direct staff to take a close look at that and fulfill, you know, the city has an obligation, as we know, federal law trumps, takes precedence over state law, and state law takes precedence over municipal law, codes, and ordinances. The court wrote, "We grant the petitions to vacate the order's removal of small cells from its limited approval authority and remand to the FCC." I know I'm going to run out of time here, but I'm going to read part of the court decision. "All major federal actions significantly affecting the quality of the human environment trigger environmental review under NEPA. Major federal actions include actions which are potentially subject to federal control and responsibility." It is very clear FCC is in control of this nationwide cell antenna policy. "Under the commission's procedures implementing NEPA, if an action may significantly affect the environment, applicants must conduct a preliminary environmental assessment to help the commission determine whether the proposal will have a significant environmental impact upon the quality of the human environment, and so perhaps necessitate a more detailed environmental impact statement. If, after reviewing the environmental assessment, the commission determines the action will not have a significant environmental impact, it will make a finding of no significant impact and process the application without further documentation of environmental effect." Again, that process has not been started or completed, so please do not issue any permits until it has been. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Kathleen Collins. Following Kathleen Collins is Sandra Morales.
Good evening, Council. Mr. Lee, it's a pleasure to meet you again. We had hoped that we had the matter resolved as it pertains to the Old Town projects. And apparently, we didn't know this until a week ago Thursday, there has been some changes. And in good faith, we took your word, more specifically about trying to save some of the trees along Railroad Boulevard. Now, I'm here to ask you three questions. Do you realize that it seems, because we've asked, that the certifications having to do with historical restoration, education, and training are not with these employees or contractors? If you have that, let's generate those, please. There seems to be a problem, and somehow, it's been crisscrossed, it seems to us, those of us that have lived in the area for decades, that the names of some of the trees and also their conditions have been inferred, crisscrossed, somehow changed. What we know to be those lovely California pepper trees, those have been there for 50, 75, 100 years, along with the gracious sycamores and our majestic lovely oaks. Now, we asked earlier if we could please compromise, and you said that the staff should try. So we're kind of wondering how, when almonds are on a tree, it gets classified to be a non-nut tree, and it seemed rather simple to us. However, it's a serious problem, and I hope that you would do your utmost to see what we can do to rectify this. May we also ask that we have a bird and a tree report on the next area, Down Grove Street, and of course Kent, hopefully by some different company? Because secondly, we have found out that apparently the company that would benefit from removal of the trees are also the same person or companies thereof that are coming out to do the inspection report. Many of these individuals are, have new business bonuses, and there's a question too about staff bonuses that have come to rise. And so in lieu of that, so it doesn't look like there is an interest conflict, could we please have either a specialist come out who is disassociated with some of these current companies, and also ones that are particularly trained in the historic? This relies to the, I did over 20 hours of research, Mr. Murphy wanted the specifics, so I gave him the specifics. But this relies to Title 54, there's also documentation in 24 and 42, in concurrence with the, excuse me, the Hudson Valley, Georgetown, Comstock, all these are findings. And the third thing, we were hoping that we might be able to have you understand how important this is. So when you look at the backyards over there, you're going to have these new places look into the backyard to the old. This is starting to look like Hunter's Fort, Hunter's Point. You have concrete, cement, concrete, and more concrete. Those trees act as a buffer. There's over 20,000 gallons of fresh air a day produced by those trees. Where are the mufflers? Where are the hedges? And also the shade that's produced? It's compounded in the formulas, but we don't see anything like that. And we're very concerned that you're running the city, you know? You gave us your word, and also, we have a responsibility, the rest of the United States. When you travel, have you ever been to Springfield, Illinois? And same for there. So when people come here, this is our history, and we need to follow the federal laws, and those are the guidelines which take precedent over any local codes. So we appreciate it, we're more than happy to go through the documents with you, especially looking at the larger plants. And by the way, apparently the larger plants were not available for the Historic Preservation Committee because they asked me to send what I had through some other way. Thank you. I just wanted to show you that. Thank you.
You've gone over excessively, so why don't we do this? Who on staff have you been talking to? Because I believe I received a call from your mom. Is that correct?
Yes, and did you receive my paperwork as backup?
I did, yeah.
Excellent.
But you know, what I'm interested in is who you're talking on staff.
Well, we really like to make some compromises, and we really like to be working with you and our representatives.
Okay, I think that it might be a good idea to take this offline. Jason, can you direct staff to have a conversation?
It's not the conversation, sir. We need to correct the paperwork, and we need to see that the goals of the overall community, the goals of the country are lifted.
Sure, I understand that, but everything starts with a conversation. So my point here is, if we're not talking, and you know, obviously, these are very detailed things that you want to see done, but I think that it would make better sense if we direct staff and have a conversation with you so that we have a direction.
Can you direct staff to follow the guidelines of the federal government, please?
Yeah, Jason, do you have anyone that could talk to her? Yeah, our city manager will handle that. So, all right, thank you. Appreciate it, and our...
And we did, do we have work for a different company to come out and look at Kent? And you know, if you have an accounting department, you have an auditing department, too.
So why don't we do this?
So who's doing the checks and balances? How many other mistakes have been made on this project?
Right.
It's very critical.
The city council can't act on anything that's being brought up. The only thing is, we can direct staff to address with you, and then in the event that it's necessary for us to bring it to council, we could do that, but...
That would be fine.
But thank you, ma'am.
I look forward to your pleasure in hearing from you. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Yeah, thank you. Our last speaker is Sandra Morales.
Hi. I'm not sure if you remember me, but about two months ago, I came here, thinking that this was part of the school district also. And again, I was misinformed, I thought the superintendent would have been here tonight. I have two issues with Franklin High School that I have been trying to get resolved, one of them since last year. The principal, Ms. Obani, had sent out an email indicating that parents cannot bring any school lunches to their children. Now, part of that is they're trying to stop all these food companies bringing kids lunch, and they're trying to stop the drugs and everything coming in to the school. And I understand that, but I have two children that have major food allergies, and they have a medical execution plan on file with the school nurse. All the teachers are aware of it. Both of them have to carry EpiPens, and the nurse has to carry EpiPens. And I have been trying to get, bring my children lunches, not every day, because they're used to not eating because they've, like, been threatened. They have been told that if your parents bring you lunch, you're going to get OCS, or we're going to stop you from walking the stage, or you're going to get, you know, detention or whatever the case may be. So my kids are afraid of asking me to bring them lunch. And one of my children is now one pound above 100 pounds, and she's in the 11th grade. So she's lost 10 pounds already this year. Now, I don't know what more I have to do to get this principal to allow me, on occasion, to bring them something to eat. When my children send me a message saying, Mom, I'm starving, and I can't go in the cafeteria because they flat-out refuse to remove peanut butter and jelly from that cafeteria, or any soy products, what do you do as a parent? It's heart-wrenching that you cannot feed your children during school. I'm not asking for a daily basis. Can my children bring lunch? There's no place to store them, there's no place to keep it cold, there's no place to keep it warm or warm it up. You ask them to carry 20 to 40 pounds in books in their backpacks, and their lunches get squished to death. What more can we do? What can I do to allow me, as a parent, to bring my children some lunch when they're starving to death to a public school? I need your help. I've asked the principal...
So ma'am, I hate to interrupt, but this definitely is a school board issue.
I understand that. But I have called the superintendent.
I'd be willing to do this. Why don't you contact my office, and I'd be happy to facilitate a meeting with either you in the superintendent's office, or you, a school board member, or with the principal. I used to be on the school board, and I can tell you one thing that school boards don't want to hear is council telling them what they should do. And so, you know, to keep the peace, our colleagues, we respect them, we know that they're attentive to the concerns of the needs of the child, and if this is the case, I assure you, they'll make the right decision. But you know, I hate to stop you, but you're preaching to the city council.
I'll tell you right now, their concerns are not my children when they sat there and laughed in front of my face.
So why don't we do this? Why don't you give me a call, and I'd be happy to facilitate that, okay? And you can get my number from the clerk.
Okay, I had two issues, so can you handle that one also?
Why don't you, it's school-related, why don't you give me a call?
All right.
Okay? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. We have no additional speakers, so let's move to the next item.
Take us to section six, general administration information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Few items to talk about. First is with the upcoming holidays. The Elk Grove Food Bank is doing a turkey drive with, including other holiday trimmings. Donations will be accepted at the food bank offices through November 22. Their goal is to collect 1,000 turkeys to exceed what they did the prior year. Donations can be dropped off at their offices Monday through Friday, 10 o'clock in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon, or Saturday from 9:00 to noon. There is going to be a turkey distribution on Saturday, November 23 at City Hall. Information can be found at elkrovedfoodbank.org. Elk Grove has the lowest rate of homelessness in Sacramento County. Nevertheless, homelessness is on the rise in our city, as it is in most communities in California. To learn more about what the city is doing to address homelessness in Elk Grove, staff has created a new webpage for this topic at the main, city's main webpage under Current Topics. The page provides information about our homeless population, statistics on our monthly calls for service, instructions for reporting homeless encampments, and our encampment cleanup efforts, as well as a directory of local services for those that may be homeless. The Kasumna CSD has completed design for Singh and Carr Park. The estimated construction cost is a little over $2 million. The project is currently out to bid with bids due on November 21. This park was named in 2016 by the city council to memorialize and honor surrender Singh and Gramej Singh Atwal, residents killed in an unresolved, unsolved hate crime in 2011. The police department reopened this cold case with a video appeal to the community to come forward with new leads on social media over this past week. A couple other community service activities upcoming is the Thanksgiving Day 10K, 5K, and Kids Fun Run benefiting Chicks in Crisis. This is called the Gobble Wobble, returning to Elk Grove on Thanksgiving morning. The city sponsors this event. Traffic advisory with road closures and detour information released next week. Race registration and event details are available at itsyorace.com. In partnership with CSD Fire, Elk Grove Police Department will be collecting and distributing toys to families in need around Christmas time. Toy project applications will be accepted in person at the police department through November 29. Details about the project are available on the city's website. Elk Grove's veterans organizations will honor military service members who perished on the attack at Pearl Harbor with a special wreath laying ceremony at 7:15 a.m. on Saturday, December 7, in the Veterans Grove at District 56. Everyone is welcome to attend. The city has partnered with the Elk Grove Community Council to host the Illumination, a new festival for the city, for our community. It's a holiday festival on Saturday, December 7, at District 56. Experience the season with sparkle and shine at this all-new multicultural family celebration. Festivities will include a holiday festival on the commons starting at 4:00 p.m., the Running of the Elves 5K Fun Run at 4:30, Holiday Lights Parade at 6:00 p.m., and the Lighting of the Tree at 7:30. Details and registration information for the run and the parade are available on the city's website. Just a reminder, the city will celebrate the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday. City offices will close on November 28 and 29 in observance of that holiday, and I remain available to answer any questions the council might have. Any questions? No questions? Perfectly clear? Thank you, sir. All right, next item.
Go to section seven, council comments, reports, and future agenda. Go to Section 7, Council Comments, Reports and Future Agenda Items.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Detrick.
Thank you. Jason, when you mentioned the Elk Grove Food Bank's Turkey Drive, I didn't know whether you mentioned that they also have a, a monetary option where if you wanted to go online, you can either, uh, do it electronically online or they have the address to send checks as well. Uh, there's a huge shortage this year. Things are coming in slower than they have in the years past, so if everybody can think of those who are less fortunate during this time of year to kind of dig deep and help out, whether it's, you know, just if it's a few dollars, uh, so probably for about $30 they can buy a, put together a dinner for a family of four. Most people spend that probably a month at Starbucks, so if you think about that, keep that in perspective. If you can help those in need, this time of year is a, a, a great time. Wanted to mention, uh, had some correspondence from Chief Albright that our Elk Grove PD had mutual aid up into the fire in the Sonoma, Roanoke Park area. Chief, want to thank you and the team for that. I see we got our fire chief in the audience. I don't, did we have any of our firefighters go up for mutual aid up into the fires over the last few weeks?
Yeah, yes, sir. We sent, uh, four engines, total of 17 personnel that were up there for two weeks, so, but I, I don't say it in particular.
Thank you, chief. Make sure you send our regards to all your team as well. As many of you know, I work for PG&E as well and the mutual aid that comes with our police and firefighters to, uh, help with all these time, different events that we've been having, as well as, uh, you know, the PG&E employees and the public works folks with all these windstorms and everything else. It, it's a tough time to be out there. And if you saw some of the different pictures and videos of, uh, firemen and policemen just on the ground, just exhausted, getting a little break before they jump back into action. So, you know, as, as we mentioned earlier, we, we usually do a moment of silence. And I think sometimes we've, we just kind of take it for granted, the, uh, the services that are provided and, and harms way that a lot of our team members put themselves in, so really appreciate that. And then that kind of leads me into the last item that, uh, I wanted to speak on is Veterans Day. Because, uh, not all cities do what we've done and put together a, a Veterans Day Parade. And I think that's something that, uh, some of the residents maybe take for granted and we had a huge turnout. I think there was over 80 different entries in the event this year. And, uh, the, the tribute to the men and women of the armed forces that give us the freedoms to do what we do every day here in the United States. So keep that in mind as we, uh, think about our veterans this week and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. So since we last met, uh, we attended, along with Vice Mayor and, uh, Councilmember Nguyen, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or SAOCOG, Regional Futures Forum, um, talking about how transportation, uh, is, connects to our regional prosperity. Uh, it was a great event, attended by, uh, among other, um, a lot of experts in the field, but our, our, um, California Secretary of Transportation, David Kim, was just one of the notable speakers about that, uh, and, and during that time. Uh, we had our SAOCOG, uh, board meeting and we had our SAOCOG, uh, Policy and Innovation Committee meeting where we talked about the Regional Housing Needs Assessment that, that determines, um, the number of affordable housing units that we need to zone for in, in the coming years. Um, we also have an emergency meeting on the, on Monday to try to adopt our Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy. The, uh, the meeting, uh, meaning behind that is to avoid a, the federal governments, um, what they call the, the Safe, um, um, the, the Safe, uh, Act where they, they've adopted, or, um, the federal government's adopted some air quality standards that put us out of compliance and could make it difficult for us to compete for, for money for, uh, for our transportation projects in the future. So that's why that's important. Labor Authority was canceled. Uh, tomorrow we have the Sacramento Transportation Authority. Uh, I want to, uh, thank, um, Chief Albright for their, uh, tour of the Regional Real-Time Information Center, the Arctic. It's a pretty, um, pretty cool facility where we can see a lot what's going on throughout the city and helps, uh, our city be responsive to citizens. We had, uh, the Citizen of the Year Dinner, um, with the mayor and I attended and honored, Rebecca Davis. Congratulations to her. We had Unmet Transits Needs, uh, meeting hosted here in City Hall. And then, um, the Family Justice Center. Uh, I also want to thank the chief and, and, um, Chief Albright for, um, being host committee member of that as well, uh, helping, um, victims of domestic violence. Uh, that, that's a great organization. And then, couple final things. Uh, one I want to recognize, November is Native American Heritage Month. Uh, there's a, uh, contemporary art by First Californians and other American Indian artists with strong ties to the state at the, uh, Crocker Art Museum that's on display. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Ms. Denise Walker for bringing that to our attention. And then finally, uh, I, uh, had a, um, couple, met with, uh, some, some of our residents over, uh, in the Stone Lake area and on the west side of town, uh, about our, our hospital application. And I want to thank Chief Noblet, um, Jason Bierman, uh, I'm so sorry, Chief Albright providing his, uh, his staff, uh, to support that effort, uh, as well as, uh, Antonio Oblog for being there and Jason Bierman for helping out. Um, and I want to just say to my colleagues, um, the, uh, I, I think I heard from a lot of folks that evening and, and I, um, but one group in particular, um, the NEST group, wanted me to pass along, um, that they would really like to, um, work with the council and, and, and talk to them. So I would encourage, uh, you all to either reach out or when they reach out to you to, to meet with them if you can, okay? And that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of things. I, we, uh, did our Links to Law Enforcement graduation. We gave out 40 certificates of completion. Over 150 family members and friends came to celebrate. Our sheriff, um, Scott Jones himself was the speaker. I want to thank our chief for sending staff to be a part of that six-week program. And then I also want to thank our, our Chief McLaughlin from the Fire Department for, for being here because we are now starting footsteps to fire, a five-week program. Just had our first class last Thursday. We'll have our second session tomorrow. And it looks, um, like we've got some commitments, not only from CSD, really amazing Captain John Nguyen, who's done an incredible job, chief. Thank you so much, along with, uh, Julie Ryder and, uh, Chief Dan Quiggo as well, too. So thank you so much for sending them. Um, I, you know, a couple, uh, months ago I announced that I was doing a, um, a seed grant, a community seed grant to fund community-based organizations here in our city, uh, to give them an opportunity to use the funds, uh, to do whatever it is that they need to keep their organization going or whatever project it is that they need that truly isn't funded, um, right now. And so I'm, I'm pleased to announce the five winners of the seed grant is American Legion Post 233, who will use the $500 to buy ribbons and flags and update some of their flags for their events that they do. Elk Grove Fine Arts Center, who will be using the funds to, um, I believe it's stones to create a bench-like, um, and also for an event that they do. Uh, Elk Grove Community Garden and Learning Center will be using the funds to update and upgrade some of their gardening tools. Eagles for Earth, which is a Pleasant Grove High School Environmental Club, will be using the funds to buy, um, recycling bins where they will put around the school. And then last but not least, uh, Face to Face, which is a fairly new organization here in town, who has worked with the teen center and I believe the mayor has spoken on one of their panel events before, is what I saw. They will be using the funds to do outreach and education amongst our youth here in our city. So congratulations to those five. I will be posting another round of the seed grants at the beginning of, uh, 2020. That's all I've got, sir.
Councilmember, I just want to say, um, I heard from, um, County Supervisor, uh, Oscar, uh, in yellow, and he commended you for a wonderful presentation today at SacState, so...
Thank you. Yes, yes, I...
You're too humble to mention that, but he, he, he spoke very well of, of you and what you did.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right. Vice Mayor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as was mentioned, I attended a portion of the SAOCOG's Regional Future Forums discussing, uh, kind of transportation and growth issues in the region. I want to echo the comments from, uh, Councilmember Detrick on the Veterans Day Parade. I wasn't able to make it out there this year because of a work conflict, um, but I just appreciate, um, the outpouring of support that the community shows, um, for that parade. And, and really, they were, there were people already lining up out there, uh, at 9:00 in the morning, uh, with their, getting their seats and getting ready to go, uh, for a parade that didn't start until after 11:00. Um, I would like to see that we have a larger, um, city of Elk Grove presence in that parade because I got contacted, one, to get harassed about why I wasn't in the parade, but also because there was some confusion about everybody marching behind the City of Elk Grove Council banner. And so I think if we, we, we need to provide that space for people who want to be in the parade and, and be a part of it to, to be able to do so, but to not have confusion as to who the city council is or is not. Um, so I would like to see us have a, a larger presence if we can afford that, uh, that, commitment, for lack of a better word. Um, we did have a, uh, Regional Sanitation District meeting this morning, and the one thing that I'd like to point out is because of prudent financial management, particularly refinancing some, uh, bonds down to, uh, a state loan at the 1.6% and 1.7% interest rate, which as it was brought up, there are other agencies now that would like to borrow money and pay a more than that interest rate from the sanitation district because they get the money so cheap. Uh, but because of those efforts, they projected that for at least 10 years, we'll be able to hold the current, uh, utility billing rate of $37, um, whereas we, the board had previously authorized, I think within that same period, if not a little bit outside that period, uh, to go up in the low 60s range. So that's very good and also the fact that they brought a, a project that was projected to be north of $2 billion, um, again, because of some cost savings, because of getting cheaper money. Obviously, if you have a less, less of a debt service, that, that project's now, um, just over a billion and a half, which is still a lot of money, but nonetheless, it was moving in the right direction. And then tomorrow, um, afternoon, we have the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting where we'll have a, a discussion openly on, um, the results of the initial polling for whether or not to place a transportation sales tax on the 2020 ballot. So it should be an interesting conversation, to say the least. That's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, there are a couple of things that I'd like to highlight that wasn't mentioned. I participated in Laguna Creek's, uh, uh, High School Football Scholarship Award, uh, which two, uh, seniors were given the Red Bird Award Scholarship money that will go towards, um, their college and, and, um, you know, I'm just very thankful when I, when I see, uh, families within, uh, Elk Grove, uh, see the benefits of, uh, paying it forward. Uh, and this is one of those which is just exceptional. Um, you know, Detrick is, or Derek, that is, um, is, uh, is part of the Post 233 and his family has been a strong advocate of this particular scholarship. The other thing that I think is of value, um, is Youth Engagement Summit, which is being spearheaded by the County Office of Education, but, um, I participated in their summit and one of the things that I think is worthwhile for us, um, you know, I don't maybe care, you can pass this forward, um, is ways in which we can bring that down and to have a conversation with the young people on, um, getting involved a little bit more in the community, particularly, uh, this is timely for the census, uh, voter education and that sort of thing. And in, in hearing some of these young people, uh, come from different, uh, parts of the county, um, there was an, an Elk Grove presence and, um, I saw an opportunity in which, uh, if we just bring down the speaker and start talking to the young people, I think that might spark, uh, an interest. And so maybe if you can pay that, pay the, uh, send that forward to, uh, to the commission and, and have them consider it, that would be pretty awesome. Thank you. Let me see, um, aside from that, participated in, um, some of the talks, uh, as far as I, as William Jessup, uh, talking about the, uh, the need for, uh, for community to, to really acknowledge the diversity, uh, and the inclusion of not only, uh, folks of different, um, ethnicity, but religion as well. Uh, and, um, you know, the speaker, uh, that, um, that spoke at that particular event was pretty phenomenal and exceptional and I had the privilege of being invited to that event, um, with Mark Jansen, one of our very active, um, you know, individuals here in Elk Grove. Let's see, uh, oh, uh, the, um, participated in the, um, CSD Here for Tomorrow, um, event and I think Chief, you're still here, right? Uh, Fire Chief?
Sir.
There you are, yeah. And I just wanted to, yeah, to take this opportunity to, to really, uh, highlight how touched I was to see, um, these individuals that really made a difference, um, in saving lives. And what was so wonderful about this is to, to see, uh, the, the ones who at one point was a patient and are now thanking, um, these first responders. Uh, and, um, we, you know, witnessing what they had to say and participating in that just, just, just made me very happy, uh, that, um, there are men and women that work day and night to make sure that everyone's safe. And, um, you know, we had, um, our officers being honored there and Chief Albright was there as well. But, um, yeah, that's what it's all about. And, um, uh, you know, I, I'm just very thankful. So if you, both of you, Chief, you can send it forward to the, uh, the officers and the firefighters and paramedics that, um, you know, at least for, for me, I'm very appreciative of that and, um, it, um, it was very touching. So thank you for continuing to do that. That is all I have and, um...
Sir Mayor, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make one quick announcement and that is that, um, our council member's son, uh, Steve Detrick's son, Brian, was just selected last night to be the coach for the disabled water ski team for the world for 2021. And this was just selected last night. This is huge, huge. So I want to congratulate you for that.
Very good, yeah, very good, yeah. All right, uh, let's move to the next item.
Take us on to Section 8, Arkansas and Calendar Items.
Okay, um, want to open for public comment, see that no members of the public signed to speak, want to close public comment, council deliberation.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Item 8.7 for a separate vote and I have a question on an 8.14.
Okay, 8.7 is pulled, 8.14, question?
Uh, so my question is this, and I'm absolutely in favor of the wellness room and the improvements to be made to, to have a quiet space for the employees. I'm just curious, I'm familiar with the wellness room, uh, here in the PD side of the house and it's consist- essentially of a nightstand and a reclining chair. Why is it $80,000 to provide that across the street?
We're actually taking a bathroom and converting it, so we have to remove all the fixtures, redo the floor, everything, so it's, it's a significant change to the current use.
And we can't identify any other space that doesn't require such extensive change?
Um, not over in the City Hall facility, no. We, that was, that was the best choice we can make, given, given the conditions over there.
Okay, all right.
Okay, um...
I'll move, uh, the remainder of consent then.
I, I would like to comment on 8.7 also, Mr. Mayor, since I wasn't here at the last meeting.
We pulled that item.
We pulled that, so let's move the rest of them, uh, first. So we got, got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? All right, 8.7, go ahead.
Great, thanks, uh, can I go first, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, great, thank you. So I wasn't here at the last meeting when we talked about this and discussed about this. And it's unfortunate that the "from district" motto, which we had, um, was not, is not recognized. And talking to council members from our other cities here in the region, they've all shared with me that that was the best form because it made sure that all the council members work together as they represent the city. Moving from this "by district" motto, as you know, I talk about this all the time, that I work for a nonprofit organization in Sacramento, got three locations, one in South SAC, one in Oak Park, and then one in Citrus Heights. Prior to that, I had five locations spread out around the city of Sacramento. And to get council members or representative who did not represent an area in which my office was in, to come to my office to tour it was like pulling teeth. And to get them to even support it was even worse because it wasn't in their district. Now, I had an office in the city of Citrus Heights. The city of Citrus Heights, at the time, was an at-large, at-large system. And while I was in a certain district, I was able to get the entire city council from the city of Citrus Heights to not only support the work that I did, whether or not it was in their district, but also come out to tour my office and to see the difference that we made in their city. While I understand that we have to move towards this model because, as Councilmember Detrick had said, we do have a gun to our head and this is bullying. And it's unfortunate because we have a lot of young people in this room and I've got a nine-year-old daughter and I tell her to stand up to her bully. But in this situation, and because of the issue that we have where we're being sued, we cannot stand up to this bully. We have to let the bully win. we cannot stand up to this bully, and we have to let the bully win, and this is very What you see now is a council member and a team that work really well together. Organizations, neighborhood, when I first got on this council, I didn't know what I was doing, but I had the support of my colleagues here jumping in and assisting me and helping me. Right now, we work really well together, but we are not going to be here forever. This council will change. And this "by district" motto will force us to then work into silos. And I see that, and I know that, only because I work in Sacramento, and I see that every day, every day, whenever I have to go to the city of Sacramento and ask for assistance or help, or get support on a project or a program that I'm trying to run. And so it's unfortunate that we are moving into this, this new "by district" model and this new "by district" system. But I also wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, I watched tapes, and you talked about, this is the people's seat, and you are absolutely correct. The people should vote for each and every single one of this seat. But then you also talked about the appointments, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you left the school board in the middle of your term, which caused an appointment for the school board. And you left the middle of this term here, which also caused the appointment, which I went for, and I'm grateful for that. But because of that, we had to do the appointments, right, because it was going to cost us money to run a special election. And so while I agree with you that this is the people's seat, you did cause two of the appointments that happened, not only in just this, the city council, but also in the school board as well, too. And since then, there haven't been any other appointments in both the school or the city council. I will support this moving forward, I mean, we've already took a vote on it at the last meeting, not because I think this is great for our city, but because I feel like, as Councilmember Detrick has said, we do have a gun to our head, and we are being bullied, and it's unfortunate, it really is, that we can't stand up to our bully.
So I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Huen, but, you know, this is not about me. It's about empowering the people to rise up, and I hear your argument, and I'm not saying it's invalid, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, it is the law. And I will not, you know, I'm glad that, that you've said that you would be supporting this, but it's one of those things where it's the right thing to do, you know, and we may disagree on the reasons why, but I respect that. I just think that the city would be in a better position, and you don't know, honestly, you don't know what the future will hold. It could be for whatever reason why a council member would leave a seat, but the important part is, if that happens, you hold a special election, you don't do another appointment. And that was the, the entire argument that I was pushing forward. But I respect what you're saying, I hear you, and, yeah. Councilmember or Vice Mayor, Hugh.
Well, I have nothing to add, I said my piece last meeting, I just wanted a separate vote.
Okay, all right, okay. 8.7, all in favor? Say aye.
I think you need a motion, you need a motion and a second.
Did you want to say something, Councilmember Huen?
I was voting.
Oh, okay, all right, let's do this properly. Is there a motion to move 8.7? Right? I'll move 8.7. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Okay, motion, second, all right, all in favor? Shall we do a roll call? Vice Mayor, your preference?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Huen.
Aye.
Councilmember Detrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Suen.
Here, I mean, aye.
Right? Vice Mayor Hugh.
No.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. All right, let's move to the next item.
Take us on to Section Nine, our public hearings, and the first being on 9.1, public hearing to consider a minor conditional use permit in determination of public convenience or necessity for the sale of beer and ABC Type 40 license for the bank shot project located at 8535 Elk Grove Boulevard.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, council members. Sarah Kirchgessner, planning. The proposed project consists of a minor conditional use permit and a determination of public convenience or necessity to allow the applicant to obtain a Type 40 alcohol license from the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC. The Type 40 license would allow for the sale of beer for consumption on or off the premises. The bank shot is not located in an over-concentrated census tract as defined by ABC, however, the area does have a higher-than-average crime rate. The bank shot will be a new pool hall with a taproom serving beer, proposed to be located within the Elk Grove Village Shopping Center on Elk Grove Boulevard near State Route 99. The project is compatible with the uses of the surrounding shopping center. It will be located in a shopping center zone, general commercial, and will be surrounded by other commercially-zoned properties and uses. Since the project contains, includes a minor conditional use permit, the city council may impose conditions on the project in addition to the basic requirements of state law and our municipal code. The applicant has provided a safety and security plan, which was accepted by Development Services and the Police Department, and which was incorporated into the draft conditions of approval. These measures include third-party security from 4:00 p.m. to closing, multicolor wristbands, identifying customers 21 and older, sufficient employees to monitor activities, as well as a well-lit environment, adequate employee training, and no one under the age of eighteen shall be permitted on the premises after 6:00 p.m. Prior to 6:00 p.m., anyone under the age of eighteen will need to be accompanied by a parent or adult. The project is located in Census Track 9308, which ABC does not consider to have an over-concentration of the licenses. Seven on-sale licenses are located within the Census Track, and there are currently six active licenses that have a license for the sale of alcohol for onsite consumption similar to the project. The nearest schools are both located over 2,000 feet away from the project site. The nearest park, Fiker Park, is located over 2,000 feet away, and the nearest residential neighborhood is located north of the shopping center, approximately 500 feet to the north. The Elk Grove Police Department has provided crime statistics for the location, however, based on the reviewed data, the location of the project site, and the operating guidelines provided by the applicant, the Police Department has determined that there is not a public safety reason to oppose either the finding of public convenience or necessity, or the associated minor conditional use permit. As part of the request for the PCN, excuse me, the applicant does need to provide justification for how the project would serve the public's convenience and necessity. In response, the applicant notes that the project will offer an alternative to the classic bar and pub. It will be a pool room, community taproom, welcoming people of all ages and enjoying a unique experience. It will promote community and positive experiences similar to other locations that are currently located outside of Elk Grove, and it will be, provide this without having residents need to travel outside of the area. Staff has determined that the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to the common sense exemption, and staff recommends approval of the project. I'm available for questions, and representatives from the bank shot are also here to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Vice Mayor. Great, thank you. So one of the things that was mentioned earlier is that it's in, it's, ABC determines that this store is located in the high-crime area. I wonder, Chief, if you could speak about that, and if that's considered something, is that what we, I know that's ABC's term, but what is our term as far as it being a high-crime area?
Sure, I'll do my best. We break down our sectors in the city, there's 26 separate sectors. We, for this, for purposes of this review, we collected the crime stats within those subsectors. We looked at the subsector that the applicant is located within. That data, for ABC purposes, is compared against the average to those other 25 subsectors. If that number is determined to be 20 percent or higher, ABC's definition of high crime is applied to that. That's, we're not comparing our city or our crime to anybody else's, simply one subsector to the average of the others, and in that case, it would qualify under ABC guidelines as high crime.
Okay, got it, thank you, sir.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Sarah, is the project proposing to serve food?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And then they are applying for a Type 40, which allows for on-premises and off-premises sales, is that correct?
That is the definition according to ABC, it is on- or off-site premises.
And so maybe the applicant might be able to clarify this, but are they, are they proposing to sell growlers or that type of a thing, to where people would come there and potentially not stay and support the business, but just show up and take beer to be consumed elsewhere?
I am not aware that they are planning that, however, they will be here to answer that question.
Okay, that's all I have for now then.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Okay, at this point, want to declare a public hearing open, invite the applicant to come on up, and if you have no time limit, plead your case.
Good evening, thank you for allowing us to go ahead and share our ideas, and maybe answering questions that you may have about our project that we're really excited to bring to the city of Elk Grove. About your question, we are not considering letting anybody go ahead and purchase alcohol and take it off our premises, that's not our, our plan at all.
And no onsite drinks.
So can you walk me through, then, why you chose to get this type of an alcohol license as opposed to a typical restaurant with alcohol sales?
From our understanding, with the typical Type 41 license, our sales would have to be primarily from food, not food, and it has to be more of a bona fide restaurant. We're proposing that our, we, that we're serving snacks and, and things of, of that nature, that would go along with, with, you know, bar, bar food and whatnot. So our sales, for what we was told, that it wouldn't fit the criteria of a Type 41 license, and building up the cold kitchen and, and things of that nature.
So you, you won't have a kitchen, then?
We do have a small kitchen, but it won't be fully operational to be considered a restaurant.
It's only a prep kitchen, we don't provide a full menu, so it's just like finger food, fried chicken wings, french fries, it's not based on a brand whole new, whole full menu.
Okay. Okay, great, and then, so the, the business model would be like you'd leave a driver's license to deposit or something?
Exactly, yeah.
And take the balls back to the table and play pool for a while?
Definitely driver's license, for what we want to do, definitely driver's license.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I want to say thank you, I know you reached out to me, and there were issues before, and I'm glad to see that you worked it out with the Police Department, and making sure that you addressed their concerns, or it looks like you did, and the staff has recommended, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, awesome. Okay, anything else? Good?
We're good, thank you.
I just want to say one thing to Chief Albright, I took your class about eight years ago, gave me A, thank you.
That helps, right? At this point, want to open for public comment, I see that there are a couple of speakers signed to speak, Mr. Randy Becker, come on up. Following Mr. Becker is Kathleen Collins.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Normally, I get, we get things in the mail. We weren't given any consideration of knowing that this project was going to be here tonight. There has been problems across the street. So, one, I'm opposed to any off-sale of any type of liquor. It's not a brewery based upon what has been stated, so there's no reason to have off-sale. Second of all, what is going to be the security? This shopping center is, is, has some new businesses, also has big lots and a drugstore. What are going to be the operation hours? And what is going to be the businesses' practice in cleaning up the parking lot? Because that's a huge issue at the location across the street. Also, security across the street in the parking lot has also been a problem. So I'd be interested to know what the applicant's choice is. The last thing is the food. We ran into a problem with an establishment right in Old Town that was closed for a while because of their choice of food, or the lack of. I think that needs to be spelled out completely, because this is not a bar, correct? It is an establishment that sells, that will have liquor. I'm also concerned of the age group, if this is going to be family or what have you, that we need to make sure that those participating inside, excuse me, inside is well-established of, of age. Once again, establishment across the street from times, from times have been an issue. Also, how big is this place? I've not seen it, I'll have to go by there. The other establishment, when they have sporting events, takes up the entire parking area. So that in itself needs, possibly needs to be addressed, because I don't even know how big this, this space is.
3,360 square feet.
How much is it?
3,360 square feet.
Which isn't very big, as far as parking lot availability. So, you know, what, what are they going to have inside?
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Next speaker is Kathleen Collins.
Just one, the, the name of this, now, is that what they're going to put on the...
Come on up, we can't hear you.
I'm just alarmed at the name of this establishment, is that what they're going to put on this signage? Where'd they go? Is that what their signage is going to be? We have an extreme violence problem here in the United States. Do you really need, because everybody on that side goes to 99, so our children that walk to school, do they need to really see the word "shot"? I'm sure it has something to do with their activities, about which I may never say I have never played pool, but, you know, can't you come up with a hole-in-one, or jacks, or, it's, the word itself refers to violence and guns, and I go up and down, I went up and down that street six times today. So I think maybe as a better quality town that we would like to be, that maybe that could have some alterations, do you suppose, before they have this established? And also, to his point about lighting, are they, you know, if it's really dark and dingy, that's not the same for children during the day. And with no apologies, I'm going to say, what about liquor on Sundays? Is that the same timeframe? Do we have a variance timeframe? And please drive out to Railroad Street and enjoy the lovely fresh air. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing that there are no additional speaker, want to close public comment, and if the applicant want to come back up and address some of the questions that the speakers had.
Mayor, they've got the projected hours in here, 12:00 p.m. to, should be 12 noon, I'm assuming, to 10:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, and 12 noon to 12:00 a.m. Friday and Saturdays.
Yeah, and I think that's totally adjustable as well. And to comment on the lighting, we did mention that there'd be sufficient lighting, that's one of the securities. So we, we want to get away from the stereotype of pool halls being a negative thing. I believe that's the old connotation, that pool halls are negative, they're bad, they're bringing, they bring wrong people. I believe it's the area that's in that brings in the wrong people. We believe this area of Grove is, is, is upcoming, like, like you mentioned earlier, that there are new, there are new buildings, and new business opening up in the same parking lot. We spoke with the landlord, or the, what's the landlord? And, and we spoke about, yeah, spoke about maybe getting security for the whole, for the whole sector. For our security, so we have a third-party security coming in, and we have sufficient amount of applicants who, who, who want to be security for us, and, and people who want to, in a limited marketing that we did online already, we had a lot of people from Elk Grove asking about where our businesses are, and, and they're, they're really, they're really, supporting of us, and they really wanted us to bring, get more information out, but we can't right now, because right now, we're at a standstill for this reason, that's why we're here.
There won't be any off-sale beer, we will not allow any off-sale, it's only on the premises, and it does not leave the door. As far as security, will be third-party security that will secure not just ours, but the whole plaza area, that which we agreed that we want to do. As far as for minors, there is no minors after 6:00, after 6:00 p.m. Anyone after 6:00 p.m. must have a valid ID.
18 and over.
And if you can refresh my memory, a Type 40 is beer and wine only, no liquor, correct?
Just beer, only, no liquor, no wine.
Beer only, not even wine?
Yeah, no hard liquor.
Mayor. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just a question, so, yeah, I see your security plan here, and just, just for Mr. Becker, there's third-party security from 4:00 to closing.
there's third-party security from four to closing, multicolor wristbands to identify customers twenty-one and over, sufficient employees to monitor activities within the establishment. So I'd like to talk about that a little bit. Well-lit environment, I'd like to give us a visual of that. And then adequate employee training, including training on state and local regulations, as well as safety and security measures. So if you could touch, just give us a visual of, I heard someone comment about lighting.
Yeah, so, so we have, right, currently right now, we have a track light going throughout the whole building. We left that there on purpose because these track lights are LED. And they're bright, they light the whole area. And like I said, when you walk into a typical pool hall, it's dark, it's dingy. But we want to go away from that. We want to create light like this. When we walk in, it's more inviting. So that's our goal, our aim is to do.
Great. And then how about, when you say sufficient employees, what does that mean? And then from your third-party security, how many security guards would you envision?
As far as sufficient employees, a little background on myself, I've been in the restaurant business for over ten years. And what I found out was having a sufficient amount of employees, make sure they're greeting customers walking around, they have a better visual of what's going on and a better idea of what's really going on throughout the whole company, the whole business, the whole environment. So that's why we wanted to have sufficient employees. Maybe overstaffing, even though there's overhead on our end, it prevents, it deters crime pretty much. That's what we envision.
And then the security, how many security guards would you say?
Right now, we're working with a third-party security to find out how many security guards we can have. Right now, we're still communicating with them. We want to have at least two, just security, just one at the door, one inside. And we're working on maybe if they can patrol outside as well.
Thank you.
The only question I have is, explain to me what a bank shot is.
It's a community taproom. We offer pool tables.
It's when you take the white ball, which is called the cue ball, you hit it into a colored ball, which is called the object ball. That ball then hits the rail, which is a part of the pool table, and goes into a pocket that was not a direct shot.
So I knew that, but I just wanted the superstar to explain that, you know, for the benefit of the, yeah, for the benefit of the community. You know, it certainly is not intended to be violent. And, you know, as a pool player myself, I understand how important that is. It's geometry.
First off, superstar, is there something we need to know about the applicant here?
He should be very honest.
I've been playing pool since ninety-two. And if you have seen the women's championship in pool hall, you heard of Black Widow. That's what everyone, no, I'm not Black Widow. Everyone calls me that.
I remember that.
Everyone calls me Black Widow. I take on the challenge, but I'm pretty good.
Very good.
And for myself, I'm also a pool player. I taught my nephew when he's eight years old. He's thirteen right now, so he's been playing pool for thirteen, since he was eight. So five years, he's pretty good.
Very good.
And we want to teach the youth community to enjoy pool with us, and we want to offer them some free gaming for an hour, just to teach them the basic.
Well, I will say, they say that a good pool-playing ability is a sign of a misspent youth. I can either confirm or deny that because I've spent many a day in a pool hall and into my later college years playing pool. So I'll challenge you right now, Mayor. We'll lay down a couple bank shots.
I have to say this, that, you know, I was in the MU too much while at UC Davis, so that's, that's how I learned how to play pool.
I do have a serious question, though. I know with respect to a business in the past, and I can't remember which business it was, and I don't know whether or not this was ever codified as a code, but there was something, a provision where if we received excessive calls for service, we could bill that back to the business. I believe it might have been put into place when strikes first came to be. Is that something that still exists?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor, Shane Diller with Development Services. We have a couple provisions in the code. We have a nuisance section about disruptive activities that can lead to us being able to begin to recover costs for nuisance abatement actions against excessive calls for service. And then there's a language in Title IX that allows the police chief to step in and request a tighter security plan for a business that is creating ongoing issues or having repeat calls for service.
Okay. And I only ask that, I'm sure you're going to run a fine business, but to kind of allay some of the concerns that have been mentioned, is we do have teeth in our code that should you sell or should the business attract the wrong type of clientele, and that gets out of hand, we have ways to mitigate that.
Awesome. All right.
One more question.
So do you have any plans of any interior or exterior security cameras?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's, that's a good deterrent for a lot of people to, and I know that definitely helps the chief when there's, when there's any issues. And it's, I think, that's all I have for right now. Oh, I know one other question. How many tables are you going to have in there?
Eight tables.
Eight tables? Is that the variety of tables or eight pool tables plus the other types of tables?
Plus the other types of tables.
It's eight pool tables plus other types?
Air hockey, arcade games, coin-operated games, things of that nature.
And I didn't see a capacity, occupancy capacity.
As far as...
It's in the, I guess, a proposal for the fire plan?
We don't have that specific with us. I believe it was in the permits that we were planning for, for the fire department.
So I know, obviously you'll have to meet that, but do you guys have a maximum even that you're looking at?
Not at the moment.
So it's going to be based on the size of the location and what's in it, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's just trying to get an idea on, you know, because we've had issues, was mentioned with, with the, one of the other facilities where you had, all of a sudden it became text messaging, hey, let's go take over this place.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? And so that would be definitely a concern.
Definitely. That's something that we'll definitely have to look into. I know it has to do with the square footage versus how much we fit in there. But I believe that's something that we definitely have to...
I believe our architect guys proposed for it to have like a hundred and twenty?
A hundred and twenty?
About there.
Okay, that's, that's quite a bit.
Well, we're not sure yet, but I could find out. Fire chief's right behind you. Yeah.
I think there's probably two issues, right? One is the square footage, but then if you've got pool tables taking up a large part of that square footage and other tables, that that would reduce down the available space. But anyway, I just would be curious at some point.
That was part of the reason why we didn't want to build a full kitchen and take up all that space. So we minimized the prep kitchen, kind of condensed our menu down and try to open up as much space as possible.
When he, when he said that, it was like, it was an empty space. So we told him he could fill up more stuff. So with that number for a capacity, it's written somewhere, but I don't have it.
You know, the other thing that I don't think you guys mentioned is you have an arrangement with some of the local businesses within the shopping center, right?
Yes.
So you can actually order food and have it delivered into your, your business.
And that's the barbecue business.
And so that's one way in which you guys found it, to be able to, to take a shortcut and not necessarily have a full kitchen.
Yeah, so if you, if we go to any other taprooms around Sacramento, there's food trucks, and they don't serve their own food. They have food trucks, they have caterers come in. And our, our partnership with the local businesses around the actual shopping center, like Pizza Bell and Max Barbecue, which already came up to us already and wanted to partner with us, that's pretty much our food truck. They want, they want to serve their food at our establishment, things of that nature. So that's something that we wanted to be a partner with other businesses and do fundraising as well, like Des Bros does fundraising right across the street from us, stuff like that.
Is it Matt Q's or?
Matt Q's.
Yeah, so I can order it on an iPad and they'll deliver it?
That's, that's the plan. That's the plan.
All right, any other questions?
The chief gave you an A, so we're expecting big things here.
I need a lesson.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And at this point, want to declare our public hearing closed. And council deliberation and direction.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention? All right, congratulations. Next item.
That'll take us on to item nine point two, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution repealing and replacing resolution number twenty seventeen dash two eighty-nine and approving the policy associated with Title Thirty of the Elk Grove Municipal Code titled Solid Waste Management Related to Methodology to Determine Commercial Refuse Holler Fees.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Christian Punzal, Recycling Coordinator with your Recycling and Waste Division. This evening's presentation pertains to solid waste management policies and methodologies. To give you some background, in two thousand seventeen, twenty seventeen, sorry, City Council adopted a resolution related to adopting commercial refuse hauler fees and policies. Staff is in the process of converting all reporting to an electronic system to not just improve the efficiencies, but to reduce the possibility of errors. The proposed policy changes are the result of this process and will simplify the transition to electronic reporting. The resolution includes several policies related to solid waste. In order to eliminate confusion by having numerous resolutions referring to similar policies, staff recommends the original resolution be repealed and replaced in whole by a proposed resolution. The first key change is the applicable fee rate. Commercial hauler fees are determined by the amount of waste that is diverted. However, if a commercial hauler does not operate in Elk Grove in any given quarter, there is no basis in which to calculate the fee due to on revenue generated. Under these circumstances, staff is proposing that the rate be determined by the diversion of a previous quarter. Another key change is the twelve-month average diverted tonnage report. Haulers can report actual tonnage collected during a quarter, or if there is an unexpected drop in diversion, they can use the average tonnage from the last twelve months. If they use the twelve-month option, they are not required to report actual tonnages collected. This results in inaccurate data collection and reporting for city staff. Consequently, the proposed change would require them to require both actual data, actual and average tonnages, when using a twelve-month option, to ensure accurate city reporting. The third key change is the rate determination schedule. The proposed change to the schedule is more complicated, and so I will go more in depth of that in a few moments. And finally, the delinquent report change. One of the changes made in the Elk Grove Municipal Code earlier this year was to allow haulers to report annually versus quarterly to coincide with the annual reporting with the state, but also to improve efficiency and reduce staff time. The previous resolution did not reflect a change in one section of the code pertaining to late fees. The action does not affect the amount of the late fee or how it is assessed. It merely updates the tax to be consistent with the frequency of the reporting. To give you a background on the rate determination schedule, the city uses a sliding scale to determine commercial hauler fee rates that are due. Diversion rates achieved in one quarter determines the fee rate applicable to revenues earned in a subsequent three-month time period. We're streamlining this by using the diversion rate in any given quarter to determine the fee rate for any entire subsequent quarter rather than a three-month period. To clarify, here is an example of a hauler providing services to businesses in Elk Grove, whether it's waste and recycling. We'll say the first quarter, which is January, February, and March. The following two months, which is April and May, are spent reporting tonnage hauled, calculating the diversion rate. How much of the waste was diverted from landfills through recycling? The hauler then refers to the table that was shown in the previous slide to determine the applicable fee rate. For example, let's say that if a hauler diverts thirty-two percent of solid waste, that hauler will be, would pay a ten percent hauler fee on revenues earned during a subsequent three-month period. As shown here, the three-month period would be June, July, and August, which does not align with the standard annual quarter. To date, this has caused some confusion amongst the haulers and increases staff time when processing these reports. Staff is proposing to change the timing so that the waste collected in the first quarter will be reported in the second quarter, and resulting diversion rate will determine the fees applicable to the third quarter. This streamline in timing will streamline the reporting process for both the hauler and staff. It will also facilitate the transition to an electronic reporting. I'd also like to emphasize that we are not proposing to change any franchise fee rates due, but will only impact the timing of when rates are applicable. We reached out to all fourteen registered commercial haulers that provide services to our business community here in Elk Grove, and the responses were either positive or neutral. To conclude, staff recommends that the city council consider a resolution repealing and replacing resolution number twenty seventeen dash two eight nine and approving the policy associated with Title Thirty of the Elk Grove Municipal Code titled Solid Waste Management Related to the Methodology That Determines Commercial Refuse Holler Fees. This concludes my presentation. Staff and I are available for any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? There are no questions. Perfectly clear. Thank you. Okay, at this point, want to declare public hearing open. Want to open for a public comment. Seeing that no members of the public signed to speak, want to close public comment and declare public hearing closed. Council deliberation and direction.
Motion.
All right, got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention? Next item.
That'll take us on to item nine point three, which is a public hearing to consider introduction of ordinances amending Chapter seventeen point oh four of the Elk Grove Municipal Code relating to California Fire Code and repealing Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter sixteen point three four relating to the Uniform Code for Building Conservation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Shane Diller with Development Services. This public hearing is a two-pronged item. There's an ordinance to adopt local amendments to the California Fire Code by amending Chapter seventeen oh four of the Elk Grove Municipal Code, and then a repeal of Chapter sixteen dot thirty-four of the Elk Grove Municipal Code, which is the Uniform Code for Building Conservation. The California Fire Code, like all other building codes, is updated every three years. It's based on the International Building Code, which is then adopted by the state agencies into the California Codes, the California Fire Code in this case. And then local agencies have the ability to make amendments that are justified by climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. Here in Elk Grove, as you know, the Fire Code is enforced by the Consumer's Fire Department and the chief and his designees. The Elk Grove Municipal Code actually has language that specifically carves out that the code is exclusively enforced by the Fire Department and not by city staff. The local Fire Code amendments, or local Fire Code amendments, were previously adopted in two thousand and seven and ten and in thirteen, but not in sixteen, where we adopted just the standard state code. The local amendments presented to you this evening are on the next couple of slides. They include a minimum building square footage requirement for the installation of fire sprinklers. The state code requires that they be installed in most occupancies at twelve thousand square feet, and it's reduced, as it has been in the previous adoption I'd mentioned, to thirty-five hundred ninety-nine or thirty-six hundred square feet. This code includes a requirement for monitoring of fire alarm systems. It has language regarding the access of emergency vehicles to neighborhoods and properties. It has a required shut-off device between the primary emergency or backup power sources in buildings. What that means basically is that when you're beginning to move into new technology relating to power and you're installing solar systems or Tesla Home batteries, that when the Fire Department would arrive at a structure fire or a structure collapse and need to disconnect the power, they would need to make sure that both the utility service power and any supplemental power are all disconnected. And so this shut-off device requirement would ensure the safety of the firefighters when making sure that the power to the property is actually... when making sure that the power to the property is actually turned off. We have requirements for automatic sprinklers in manufactured housing and mobile homes, as that is also required in all new single-family residences and has been for a couple of code cycles now. There are references in this code to new national standards regarding the installation and operation of those energy storage systems. And then there's a requirement that if a property, particularly in our rural area, is going to install electrified fencing, that there be notice to the Fire Department for the safety of responding emergency personnel. In order to make local amendments, we do have to adopt findings. And the findings, again, break down into three categories, the first being climatic. Specifically here, we have high heat and low humidity, as you know, which causes extreme dryness. And that combined with high winds, as we've seen around the state recently, increases fire danger. We also have predicted sea level rise in the San Francisco Bay Area and Sacramento River Delta, which can increase flood threats in our, in the floodplain areas of the city and in the Fire Department's Service District. There are geological findings related to alluvium soils, which are mixed with a low magnitude earthquake can cause damage to areas of electrical transmission facilities, and that can cause fires and impact infrastructure. Then we have topographical findings related to vegetation, again, with the highly combustible dry grasses and weeds that we see sometimes from six to eight months of the year. We have an existence of a lot of open space or wildland that then becomes adjacent to development and creates a higher hazard for wildlife, threat to people and property. We have surface structures, like our railroads that run bisect through the city, that can run between eighteen and twenty-four trips a day on those lines. And those, those train trips then can reduce the response time of fire equipment or emergency personnel. And then we have buildings, landscapes, and terrain such as suburban propane, our creeks and rivers that create the construction of roadways in a way that can cause traffic congestion or channeling. Additionally, the creeks and streams we have in our topographical consideration, we do have the presence of one hundred, two hundred, and five hundred-year floodplains that increase the risk of flooding. The Fire Code amendments, as much of what we do in the Development Services Department, was vetted through our industry working group. They reviewed copies of proposed drafts, and the Fire Marshal from CSD, Morgana Yonkey, attended a couple of IWG meetings to speak with them directly. And the process for this includes both the adoption this evening and a ratification, as the CSD is doing before their Board of Directors. Their board heard this item on November sixth for its first reading, and it's anticipated that it will return to them for a second reading and public hearing on November twentieth. Then, when that's concluded, we will return to council, most likely on December thirteenth, with a resolution to ratify the CSD Board's adoption, which is a requirement of code, of state law. And that would be for effective, effective immediate adoption. Those amendments would, to the code, will trail that, but shall become effective January first, twenty twenty. We also have that repeal of Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter sixteen thirty-four, which is the Uniform Code for the, for Building Conservation. It's a holdover from the nineteen ninety-seven Uniform Code adoptions, which was just before we transitioned to the international building codes. And it's written along in our code as a tool we could use when dealing with existing structures. And we have not used it in a couple of code cycles, and with the adoption of the California existing and California historic building codes, those standards are more modern and supersede anything we would use out of the Uniform Code. So we're proposing its repeal out of our municipal code this evening. With that, I'm available for any questions, but most importantly, our partners at the CSD Fire Department are here to answer more technical questions or anything I might not be able to do service to.
Are there any questions? No questions. Perfectly clear. Thank you. All right, at this point, I want to declare a public hearing open. Open for public comment. Seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak, I want to close public comment and declare the public hearing closed. Counsel liberation and direction.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Chief, do you support this?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Good question, though.
I'll move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution, title only, an ordinance amending Chapter seventeen point oh-four of the Elk Grove Municipal Code relating to California Fire Code and adopting by reference the twenty nineteen California Fire Code as amended.
Got a motion second? Second, second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? All right, next motion.
Motion.
I'll move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution, title only, an ordinance revealing Chapter sixteen point three-four of the Elk Grove Municipal Code related to the Uniform Code for Building Conservation.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Next item.
Take us to Section ten, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item ten point one, which should consider options and provide direction on renaming Civic Center Drive.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Bob Murdock, Public Works Director for the City of Elk Grove. The item before you seeks direction from the council on the possible renaming of the Civic Center Drive. At the City Council's meeting on September eleventh, the council approved District Fifty-Six as the new name and branding concept for the Civic Center facilities. In addition, council requested that staff research options for renaming Civic Center Drive to more closely align with the new branding concept. So as a bit of background, Civic Center Drive is a, is a two-lane, one-point-two-mile collector that runs east-west, parallels Elk Grove Boulevard just to the south. It starts at Bruceville Road and terminates at Laguna Springs Drive. West of Bruceville Road, its name actually changes to Backer Ranch Road. While the city code delegates authority to the Public Works, Public Works Director to name, rename, number, and renumber streets, the city since two thousand and four has been using an addressing guideline. And purpose of that addressing guideline is to develop and maintain an accurate and consistent addressing system for use by emergency responders and other vital services. Part of those guidelines seek to avoid duplication of street names, avoiding street names that may be spelled differently but sound the same, and also seek to have continuous roads having continuous names. So as you can see, Civic Center Drive, which is highlighted in yellow here, borders the north, the north side of the District Fifty-Six property.
Can I ask you a question before you move off that slide? Does Civic Center Drive continue east past Laguna Springs Drive?
It does not. There is currently a stub that would line up with a road in the auto center, but it has not been constructed yet. Is that property east of Laguna Springs Drive have not, has not been developed? If it does develop, probably would take on the name that's in the auto center, which is Laguna Grove Drive.
Okay.
So you could have a road that goes from Backer Ranch Road, that currently, to Civic Center Drive, to ultimately Laguna Grove Drive.
And then the developed parcel there between Big Horn and Laguna Springs, the event center spaces, are those addressed to Elk Grove Boulevard, I believe?
The, for District Fifty-Six? Or are you talking about north of that? Yes, those are addressed to Elk Grove Boulevard. Yes, they are.
Okay.
Okay. Now, as part of the, as part of the guidelines, any prospective street names are routed to CSD Fire, Elk Grove Police Department, Sacramento County Fire, and the Sacramento County Community Development Department for review. City staff routed, routed four names through the system, District Fifty-Six, District Fifty-Six, and Celebrations. And the following four names were approved, District Fifty-Six Drive, District Fifty-Six Avenue, District Drive, and District Avenue. Now, there are four properties, and actually, two hundred and fifty-five addresses currently off of Civic Center Drive. Working west to east, there is a Sacramento County Water Agency site located between Bruceville Road and Wymark. There's the Ridge Apartments, which has two hundred and forty-eight addresses assigned to it. There's the Civic Center Site, which has five addresses assigned to it. And then there's another Sacramento County Water Agency site that has one address assigned to it. Now, after publishing the report, we've received a number of comments from the Ridge Apartments, concerned about the impacts of having to readdress for all of the residents in the apartment complex. So one of the options that we're going to present is the City Council could rename all of Civic Center Drive, or they could just rename the portion of Civic Center Drive from Big Horn to Laguna Springs Drive. Now, while that is not a continuous name for a continuous street, we touch base with both CSD Fire and the Elk Grove Police Department. And while that's not optimum, they would accept that as a way of avoiding the impacts to the Ridge Apartments. So the four options actually before the City Council for consideration are, is to rename the entire Civic Center Drive with the names that have been approved. Rename only the segment between Big Horn Boulevard and Laguna Springs Drive. Suggest an alternate names that we could put through the process for consideration. Or the last is to leave the street name as Civic Center Drive. And that completes my presentation. Do you have to answer any questions?
Any questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question is, who is in charge of actually delineating the range of addresses along any particular street?
It would be a combination of the city and the post office, depending on the number of units. And so I don't really know why, for example, there's, there's five addresses associated with District Fifty-Six. I'd have to take a look at that, but as of right now, there are five addresses associated with that large parcel.
And what are those addresses currently? Do you have an idea?
I, I do not know the addresses at the moment.
Okay. There'll probably be some folks coming up to speak from the Ridge Apartments. I can ask them. Thank you.
Any other questions? Good. All right, thank you. At this point, I want to open for public comment. I see that there's a couple of people signed up to speak. First speaker is Donna Rowe. Coming up, Donna. Following Donna Rowe is Myra Sewell.
Good evening, and thank you for hearing us. I do oppose changing any of the street names. Why not just put a monument up that says District Fifty-Six or Area Fifty-One? Sounds just as stupid. But keep the whole street the same name. As it is, we're working with three names. The Backer Ranch, as well as the Auto Mall, and Civic Center, all coming at one point at one time in our, in our lives. And I just think that it should all stay Civic Center Drive, just to change our driver's license, social security cards, all of our information. You know how it is when you move. It's ridiculous. But when you have to go pay thirty-eight dollars at DMV, that's an expense. Who's going to pay for that? We're not choosing to move. And then on your credit report, when somebody runs a credit report and the address is different, you're dinged because you haven't lived there as long as you said you've lived there because it's a different name. So it really causes a lot of problems with the reporting agencies, as well as our mail and all of our inconveniences in having checks remade and all of that. I would just say, go with a monument at the corner that says District Fifty-Six, because nobody knows what it means anyway. Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am, before, hold on, before you walk away, it sounds like you are currently addressed to Civic Center Drive. Is that correct?
Been there for four and a half years.
Okay, so you don't have to tell me your address, but can you give me an idea of what a range of addresses would be near where you are? Eighty-three eighty, ninety-one fifty-three? Can you give me an idea of what the?
Our street is all eighty-one fifty-one.
Eighty-one fifty-one. Okay.
The entire block
Okay.
is the apartments.
Great, thank you.
All right, next speaker is Myra Sewell. Follow Myra is Randy Becker.
Hello. Okay, this is really taller than me. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Myra Sewell. I'm the, I am representing the Ridge Apartments. I'm actually the property manager there, so I'm here for all of our residents. And I do speak in opposition to the ten point one rename, renaming the Civic Center Drive. If there's actually any Ridge residents here at this time, will you please stand? Thank you. The Ridge Apartments is an affordable housing community with two hundred and four units. We, I did account today, and we hold a total of four hundred and eighty-six people at our property. We are the only private residence of Civic Center Drive, meaning the only residential private citizens that are going to be affected by this change. This change will deeply impact each household, forcing them to take time out of their unique schedules, some with late shifts, others with long hours, and then there are those that have very little time to spare. This proposal would force residents to change the addresses with DMV, social security, public assistance, health insurance, schools, financial institutions, utility companies, PG and SMD, employment, friends, family, and a host of many more entities. These takes, these tasks will take hours, if not days, to process and finalize. Our residents are already stressed households, and this will have an undue financial impact on them all. As a business, we are also greatly impacted due to the funding layers, which include the Tax Credit Allocation Committee, as well as the IRS. We are, again, we are an affordable housing committee and are governed by these entities. We have regulatory agreements with these entities, which very much include our address. The city failed to not only timely inform the business office about this proposal, they failed to directly notify each individual household entirely. Our residents were blindsided by this proposal, causing confusion, upset, and to feel marginalized. Thus far, residents at the Ridge Apartments have expressed nothing less than being adamantly opposed to the renaming of Civic Center Drive. Please consider the impact this will have on hundreds upon hundreds of the residents of the Ridge Apartments, which are also citizens of the City of Elk Grove. I'd ask to not pass this proposal. Thank you.
Easier than you thought it was going to be, huh?
I'm like, ah! I'm just like, it's hard, but I had to be here for my residents, you know? We were notified last minute. I tried to hustle yesterday. Emails, firing all the individual, we have three stories, by the way, so nine buildings going up and down. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew, and you may have received some emails from quite a few. There was a lot that weren't able to make it today that really wanted to come by, but they did express that they sent in emails expressing their concerns.
Thanks for coming out for your residents.
What was that?
Thanks for coming out for your residents.
Of course, yes, always.
We'll send you the bill for the gym membership of climbing all those stairs.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
All right, last speaker is Randy Becker.
I just need to get a thing, the people mover here. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, excuse me. I'm not a proponent of changing street names. Street is a street. The other day, I took my mom over to Huckleberry's. I knew it was on the west side, and yes, I'm starting to venture out a little bit.
For shame.
But I put Huckleberry's, not the street. And it took me right there. Now, if this District Fifty-Six is, area is going to be the new hottie-tottie of Elk Grove, so us folks in Old Town can have our spots back, it's not going to be District Fifty-Six, so to speak. It may be something there, not the street name. You're going to drive to wherever it's going to go. Your GPS is going to take you wherever. So, you know, the little bit Bob was inundated is nothing what's been on social media. It's outrageous. You know, it's like, really? Is this what we're going to spend our time on? When there's really important issues? And if Bob's got extra money in his, in his tote, he's going to need it for my stoplight. It's Kent Street. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't see us any reason changing it. Especially the fact that if you only change District Fifty-Six area, now you're cutting it up more and more. I mean, why don't, why don't we just figure out that we just, every street, we're going to do that? Street I live on ought to be renamed, you know? Why not? When's it going to stop? So, leave it. Just leave it. So, leave it. Just leave it. Be done with it. Five-zero. Done it. One and done. Let's do it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Seeing that there are no additional members in public signed up to speak, want to close the public comment. Counsel Delarue, send it to him. Vice Mayor?
So, back to my question that I asked during, at the close of your presentation with respect to addressing. Do we have an idea as to what the requirements of the post office would be? And I have a reason why I'm asking this.
No, we actually haven't renamed a street since I've been here, so I mean, we'd contact...
So, not for the street name, for the addressing on a particular street. In other words, if you, if you were to think of a grid block, do the addresses on this block have to be the same as the addresses on that block? Have to be the same as the addresses?
They have to be within the same number. So, you could have the four-hundred block, or the eight-hundred block. But as you go, you would match that. Now, the addresses within that block might be, might be different because you might have a different number of facilities, depending on the street. But, the four-hundred block would follow the five-hundred block, whether you're on, on parallel streets.
Okay.
So, but to answer one of your questions, I mean, I think the apartment complexes, the address is eighty-two thirty Civic Center Drive, and then off of that, you have all the apartment numbers.
Sure.
And then, and then the management company itself. So, the apartments have a single address with, with the different identifiers for the different apartments. So, that's why it has two-hundred-and-forty-eight addresses.
Okay.
It's eighty-two thirty Civic Center Drive Apartment One apartment. Okay.
So, first of all, I'm not in favor of readdressing all of those apartments. I know the disruption that would cause somebody who has a single address and for all of those people to have to redo all of their forms and everything, that's an expense that they don't want to have to bear. It's a logistical nightmare. I didn't even think about the credit reporting and that type of a thing.
That's a nightmare itself.
All, all of it is completely unnecessary. So, that's off the table for me, and I got to agree with the idea of chopping up these streets into different names. Now, you're going to have Backer Ranch till you hit a certain street, then it's going to be a Civic Center till you hit another street, then it's going to be District Fifty-Six Avenue till you hit another street, and then it's going to be Laguna whatever in the, in the Auto Mall. I mean, that's, that to me, sounds like a nightmare to plug into the GPS, or even for first responders. Why I was asking about the address, because I thought we could take that segment that has not yet been addressed, and to have those addresses be fifty-six oh-one, or fifty-six fifty, or fifty-six, you know, eighty-five, so that you're putting the fifty-six into the address as opposed to the street name. But it sounds like that's not going to fly with the post office. So, I, I think this was a good idea that came too late, maybe. And that's nobody's particular fault, but I think to try and go back and unring the bell of already having Civic Center in place is a little too late. And then, the other portion of it, too, is I think that we are looking at Civic Center as though it's a peorative thing, when in reality, we are developing this area to be the civic center of Elk Grove, with all of the amenities that we're putting into place, and some of the lifestyle choices that are going to be in that area. And so, I think the name of the street will still be appropriate, even though it won't necessarily be government offices. So, I guess I, I've talked myself into the idea that I'm in favor of keeping it as is.
Councilman Detrick, and then Councilman Simpson.
Yeah, I'm in favor of keeping it the way it is. I mean, I, I think it would be silly to do it. And I know there was a comment on the name District Fifty-Six. I did not support District Fifty-Six when we got brought forward. But that's a whole separate issue. I believe leaving it Civic Center, as was mentioned, we have the proposed between Civic Center and Elk Grove Boulevard, the Lifestyle Center that is going to go in there, that'll be a, a city-based project. We have the City Aquatic Center, and then we have the, that's already open, and then we have the new Senior Center, Veteran Center, and Community Center that's under construction, that'll be opening up shortly, which are all City of Elk Grove facilities. So, I, I think leaving that for multiple reasons as well is the great points that were brought up on the residents, what that would do to them in multiple inconveniences. So, I support keeping it Civic Center Drive.
Okay, Councilmember Simpson?
Yeah, I think it was referred to earlier, implied earlier, that, you know, the initial idea, it was, thought that government buildings weren't necessarily going to be on there. So, what started out as a simple suggestion, I think, you know, by our council, I think we, you soon find out that, how much impact it caused, the complexities of multiple different streets. So, it's one of those things where you, it's just a little thread, but you start pulling on it. There's all kinds of stuff behind there, so I'm fine leaving it alone. I think, to someone's point earlier, I mean, we'll, we'll create a brand there for, for ourselves as a community regardless. I do like Fifty-Six, I will say. You know, it's Fifty-Six Acres is, is what it stands for, just so you know. No, no, I'm just saying, it's just, it's part of a, there's a part of a mark... No, it's, it's just part of a...
I mean, would you want your address to be one-two-three District Fifty-Six, Elk Grove, California?
No.
That's confusing. I don't even, I looked up on the internet. There's not even a street that has a name with a number behind it.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to affect your addresses, not, not at all. So, yeah, we're fine. I'm, I'm good with this. Thank you.
Councilmember Wayne?
Thank you, sir. I want to thank everybody for, for coming out tonight and the outpouring letters and emails that I received about keeping the name the way it is. And, and Mrs. Rowe, you said it was thirty-eight dollars, but I think in addition to the thirty-eight dollars, it's the time. And the time is going to cost more than the thirty-eight dollars to this. So, if the Vice Mayor has made a motion to move this, I'd like to go ahead and second it, if it's had as an R B, been seconded, so that we can be done in order with.
You know, the, the one thing that I think is real important is hearing from the resident, and I do appreciate all of you coming out. And kudos to, to the one who worked the hardest, you know, climbing the stairs. Obviously, you made a difference, because I think what I'm hearing is that, direction to staff is that we keep it as is, and I would be in favor of that as well. All right? Staff, you got enough? Okay. All right. Next item.
I'll take us on to item ten-point-two, which is receive information on the City of Elk Grove Civic Facilities Assessment Master Plan, and also consider a resolution implementing various budget and capital improvement program changes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm John Griffin, one of your engineers in the Public Works Department. I'm here to introduce Andrea Gifford, who is a principal with Group Four Architecture. Group Four Architecture has assisted us with developing our facilities assessment master plan. Tonight, Andrea will provide a short presentation where she will walk us through the process employed in developing the report, which includes the measures to receive input from city staff, and she will also identify the recommendations and next steps that come out of our facilities planning process. After her presentation, Andrea and city staff will be available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. How do I advance? Okay, now that I got that figured out. So, I have just a brief agenda this evening to review our analysis and how we came up with the space needs assessment, talk about our recommended option, and then share with you some next steps. So, the purpose of the master plan report was to assess and analyze the space needs for city departments over the next ten-plus years. It included three primary locations. The City Hall campus, which we are in currently, in addition to the two police facilities on this side of the street, the City Hall facility across the street. It included the courtyard campus and the associated SWAC facility, as well as the police, police training facility located adjacent to that. It also looked at the potential of repurposing the library, if and when the library would ever vacate that building. And it guided the decisions associated with various property acquisitions and/or facility renovations. We started the process by reaching out to city staff. So, a survey, electronic survey, was sent to all city staff. The survey was really centered on the existing facilities and their current uses. It talked about their existing spaces, how those are meeting their current needs, or not meeting those needs, their personal workspaces, the availability and scheduling of meeting spaces, the public interaction that the various city department staffs have, as well as even looking at how city staff come to and from work, and how that might impact parking and/or space needs within the office environment. A separate survey was also sent to department heads that included an in-depth analysis about what their potential staffing needs might be for the ten-plus years that we were looking at, as well as forward-thinking workspace needs for their staffs, and how that might evolve over this timeframe as well. The needs assessment looks at three different timeframes, and the projected staffing levels for those various timeframes. One meeting being their immediate city needs from zero to five years, your interim needs from five to ten, as well as your long-term needs in ten-plus years. The master plan is really trying to identify all the different scenarios so that there's appropriate planning that can be done for a forward-thinking process. We also looked at proposing to standardize the workspaces and the individual workstations and offices within the facilities. We offered several different office and open workstation configurations for city staff, and those were unique to both city staff and police, understanding that those two departments have various different and unique needs. And these different workspace standards were really meant to guide the future project planning efforts and set the standards for understanding what your future space needs might be. We calculated those space needs for City Hall and police staff using those projected staffing levels, these more standardized workstation configuration, as well as some increase in shared space with meeting rooms and other amenities within City Hall. We factored in the specialized police equipment needs and operational needs that that department has, and then quantified each of the, each of that for those different terms. The table that you see now summarizes that, both for city staff. It shows your current number of staff, your current area that staff is in, as well as those recommended needs for near-term interim and future term. One of the things that we looked at was really trying to make some efficiency in how staff are, and so, looking at trying to streamline the space needs, understanding that the way that we work now is a little bit different with how technology has evolved, and the use of paper has declined, and that there's some efficiency to be gained with that in effect. We also understand and looked at different scenarios where the city council chambers might be, knowing that it could potentially either be in city staff spaces or police states, and the police staff space, and you'll see that when we look at the various options. At the same time, we started working with city staff and the Economic Development Department about different properties that, understanding that we, there was a deficiency in space when we looked at the long-term needs, and so, different properties that we might be able to meet that deficiency in. And so, we looked at both city-owned properties, understanding that that's a resource that potentially could be utilized, as well as other leasable or acquirable sites within the city proper. We took those sites and ran them through a set of evaluation criteria to understand if there's some highlights, or how we might be able to identify some positive and negative components to each one. We looked at the capacity of the site. Obviously, it needs to be able to handle not only the square footage, but the parking associated needed with that additional square footage, the access to that property, both for residents, being able to find those resources, as well as for, obviously, for police, being able to have good access within the community. The visibility of that facility, making sure that, again, residents can easily find this location, understanding the economic impact that this, these types of facilities have, as well as the opportunities for placemaking, making sure that we are improving the quality of life with these types of facilities, and looking for different synergies within the city for these types of centers. While we were looking at different sites, we were also, came up with four unique options that identified and met the different space needs required over the long-term needs. The first option, A, was really about trying to really utilize your existing facilities, as well as reusing, reusing the Elk Grove Library, and expanding office space out at the courtyard. While this was a very good scenario, it kind of bifurcated staff and started spreading them all over the city, as well as the idea that the current Elk Grove Library may not be able to be repurposed for quite some time. Option B, did a similar type of thing, is still investing in your current properties, but looking to either perch or lease, purchase or lease additional space for City Hall and the construction of a new police facility. And we were, one of the sites identified was, again, close here at City Hall, was the Rain Garden site. We also looked at an option to build a new facility for police, to get them all in a single facility, and then being able to utilize these two facilities to expand square footage for City Hall offices. And then, the final option, looking at just building a brand-new police facility, City Hall and/or combined facility. All of the different options were, again, vetted through a set of evaluation criteria, looking at things from cost, the developmental costs, including land acquisition, site development, construction cost, the timeline and/or schedule of these different options, you know, the purchase or acquirement of land. Do these different options involve temporary relocation and/or phasing? How these different options might increase or enhance the operations of the services that are being delivered out of them? Making sure that we're prioritizing functionality of these buildings and supporting the efficient operations of staff? Looking for department synergies within these different options, especially if we start looking at multiple facilities? How can we still make sure that we're bringing departments together? The sustainability of these different scenarios, as well as alignment with your current planning and general plan goals? So, after lots of iterations and vetting, a lot of things came out of that. One thing that we understood from the very beginning was that city staff really preferred the campus approach, making sure that all staff were closely aligned and located. The idea of separating police staff in multiple locations across the city, as well as city staff, seemed to be very, not much in favor. That sort of eliminated option A. We also looked at, while option D was a great option, we felt that we could still meet the goals that option D provided in potentially a less, a more affordable, more cost-effective option. And so, those two options were quickly sort of pulled off the board. We really honed in on option B and thought that there was some value in that, and that you have some really great facilities here at the civic campus, and if there's a way to renovate and expand this campus on this site, that that would be a really good option, a very cost-effective option in alignment with keeping the departments closely together. We also retained option C of building either a new City Hall or a police facility as a secondary option, if that opportunity arose, came to fruition. And then, we, of course, identified those projected space shortfalls over your ten-plus years, identified up here, as well as possible locations for expansion within the recommended option. And so, the option here on the screen, the preferred option, was option B, or B-point-two, a evolution of the original B, where we were looking to, again, renovate and expand and build upon the City Hall civic campus that you have here. So, from a City Hall perspective, your main City Hall facility would remain in operations. The services that are being delivered out of the courtyard and SWAC facilities would remain, and then we would look to expand by either purchasing a facility or leasing a facility nearby the campus here, in one of the many office buildings that are located around us. From a police standpoint, again, the two facilities, eighty-four-hundred-and-eighty-three eighty, would remain in operation, and again, expand, looking for additional twenty-one-thousand gross square feet facility nearby. These were the different sites that were identified that would be acceptable for expansion, to, again, retain those goals of keeping staff close by, and good synergy, and understanding that you would still provide sort of a one-stop shop for all your civic facilities. And the city has already looked and made a recent step forward towards this as acquiring the property on Studio Court to allow the police to meet some of their near-term needs and expand into that property. And so, just in summary, some next steps, just to provide comments and directions on our city facility assessment and master plan, adopt a resolution to program funds for CIP projects to proceed with the planning for these recommendations, and consider acquisition of any additional real estate property as recommended when the opportunity presents itself. And so, with that, if there are any questions, happy to answer.
Any questions?
Thank you.
No questions?
Thank you for the presentation.
The detail, it's interesting to see the different options and the thought that went behind it. behind it. I think you guys are on the right track.
Great.
Right, at this point in time, want to open for public comments. Seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close public comment. Council deliberation and direction.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, again, want to thank staff for all their work. Planning for the future is a difficult thing, a lot of different considerations, and I appreciate how conscientious you were in terms of cost and as well as efficiency. I know our police force does need a new building, and, you know, if the public safety continues to be a significant and if not the top priority for this council, we want to make sure that they've got a house, a safe house, because there's also a lot of, what's the word I'm looking for, security issues when you look at these facilities, which in turn makes it so expensive. So I'm, you know, disappointed in that regard, because I think having an up-to-date facility would be good, but again, getting back to the cost and making sure, as long as we can continue to grow into a space, if we have a strategy that we can grow into a space and not outgrow that, I think, you know, that's a good strategy. In other words, I don't want to see us go down a path and then all of a sudden, 10 years down the road, and, you know, these investments we've made are for naught, because, you know, if it just, we've outgrown it too quickly. So I'm supportive of staff's recommendation, option B too, so, thank you. I'll make that recommendation.
All right. Councilman?
Well, if nobody else has anything to say, I'll move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, got a motion second?
Yeah, okay.
You just only had?
I made the motion, but that's okay. It doesn't matter.
Councilmember Suen made a motion about five seconds prior to Councilmember Detrick.
He wasn't very clear. I kind of got lost in the 30-minute presentation.
Well, you said earlier I wasn't talking very much, so, you know, I was trying to make up.
I said it was a blessing.
All right, got a motion, second, all in favor. Close, extension. Let's move to the next item.
Do we need a separate motion for the resolution, Jason?
That as the action, if that's the direction, you can have that motion include the resolution for the budget amendments that were requested by staff, so we'll have that recorded in there. Taking us on to item 10.3 is to receive information on illegal fireworks activity enforcement and provide direction.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is brought at your request after you'd received feedback from residents following the Fourth of July holiday this year and the experiences they had with illegal fireworks in the neighborhoods. There has been an increase that we've both noticed and been able to statistically track in the past few years of the use of illegal fireworks around the Independence Day holiday here in Elk Grove. In response to that, in 2018, the CSD and the city partnered to create a local fireworks enforcement effort and to pursue potential code improvements or strategies that we would be able to partner on to try to tamp down on the illegal firework activity that we were experiencing. The CSD Fire Department, the Elk Grove Police Department, and Elk Grove Code Enforcement personnel teamed up for the 2018 and 2019 firework seasons, which would be about the week or so leading up to the Fourth of July, and we provided patrol staffing onto our streets to be able to both attempt to catch and cite and seize illegal fireworks from violators and to make sure that the response times to calls for service were as short as they could be, so that the citizens experiencing the illegal fireworks felt heard. I can say that fortunately in 2018 and 2019, there was no documented injury or property loss due to illegal fireworks that have come along, so we feel as though we've been fortunate in those last couple of years. There have been some fires, grass fires, that were caused by some illegal firework use, but no buildings or structures were damaged due to illegal firework use. Just to set the stage, illegal fireworks are fireworks that do not carry the state fire marshal's safe and sane seal. They include skyrockets, bottle rockets, aerial shells, firecrackers, M80s, and Roman candles, among others. To give you some ideas to what our activity has been the last couple of years, in 2018, the personnel that we deployed was able to seize 225 pounds of illegal fireworks. They issued approximately $15,000 in administrative citations. There were four misdemeanor and/or felony arrests made, and that year we had $24,000 in storage and destruction costs. In 2019, we duplicated our efforts for the most part from 2018. We seized 200 pounds of illegal fireworks, issued 13,000, over $13,600 in administrative fines issued, and so far, we haven't had any cost for destruction of fireworks, just for the storage of the seized illegal fireworks, and we're anticipating that, due to funding that's been secured through the state, the state fire marshal's office will gladly take those off our hands here at some point in the future and destroy them at the state's Fireworks patrol and illegal firework activity creates staffing challenges for the city. I think I want to preface this, and I think the chief will agree with me, that nothing we're proposing this evening is a fix to this issue. We don't believe that any amount of resources we could request at this point or change we could make would necessarily eliminate all illegal fireworks activity. We think that these are discussions of our options that would, again, help us stem the tide of it in certain ways, and I'm going to cover three options that we could undertake that have, each of them has consequences of one or the other that come along with taking that option. So the first of the staffing challenges we see is the salute to the red, white, and blue at Elk Grove Park, which consumes a significant number of police officer resources and CSD Fire Marshal staff to monitor the setup and execution of the fireworks show. Additionally, the CSD Fire Department is not a law enforcement agency by design, so they have a single staff member that is sworn, if you will, and authorized to make arrests and issue criminal citations. The code enforcement staff also then comes in and plays a supporting role, also not in a making an arrest situation, but we, code enforcement assists in the transportation and storage of the illegal fireworks and in processing the administrative citations that are issued. Because of this makeup of the staffing we've cobbled together, we rely heavily on the Elk Grove Police Department as the point agency on making contacts at the calls for service or at the parties that the fireworks task force units are responding to. And so it's a labor-intensive effort on the police departments and when we go out and do the fireworks enforcement.
Shane?
Yes, sir.
So on the enforcement, is the property owner, as well as whoever is lighting the fireworks off, are they both fined?
Yeah, we have language in our code in 1706 that allows us to cite both the person that's executing the igniting or lighting off the fireworks and what the code calls a responsible person, and that can be the owner of the property or a primary tenant in addition to whoever is actually lighting off the property. It acts similar to a social host type ordinance, and we do have that in our code and have employed some of those citations in 2018 and 2019.
And have you seen a higher rate between homeowners versus tenants?
It's not something we've tracked well, just anecdotally, no. I don't think there's a lot of distinction when it comes to this. Again, our friends from the Fire Department have stayed for this item as well, and I'm not sure if they have any insight. No, okay, we're good there. We don't have any real data that supports whether or not it's one or the other. It's, from what we can tell, probably a pretty good mix of both.
Okay, thank you.
So option one would be to free up some additional police resources by moving the fireworks show, the salute to the red, white, and blue at Elk Grove Park, from the Fourth of July to another night. Some jurisdictions, some cities and counties do their fireworks shows on the Saturday before the Fourth of July or on the Third of July. Moving it to one of those dates would conceivably free up police officers to then deploy back to fireworks patrol, which would allow us to increase the staffing pretty significantly. There are some consequences to that, which would be that we anticipate there would be lower attendance to the red, white, and blue on a night that was not the Fourth of July. That would put additional people back at their homes and in their neighborhoods, which could conceivably lead to more people lighting off fireworks or illegal fireworks at their homes instead of attending a community event or a show. And then, of course, if we're going to stand up that police presence again on a second night that we would dedicate to the park, there's the additional overtime cost of between $15,000 and $25,000, depending on the size of the deployment, and that cost, again, is not something that we believe would significantly impact the numbers that we see on the Fourth of July itself. In 2018, the city police dispatch center received 290 calls or reports of illegal fireworks between 7:00 PM and 11:00 PM, and then on 20, in 2019, that did drop a little bit to 250 calls between that same period of time, though reallocating the officers would allow us to, to what they call on-view, or to find more people in the act of lighting off fireworks and conceivably issue some more citations and see some more fireworks. Staff does not believe that it would put a significant dent in the illegal firework activity that we're seeing on the Fourth of July night itself. Option two would be to prohibit all fireworks, both the state deemed illegal fireworks and the safe and sane fireworks in the city of Elk Grove. This would be done in an effort to be able to allow us to more readily identify someone violating the fireworks law. That would be both because everyone lighting off fireworks that we would encounter would obviously be violating that law, but also because the noise and the sound of illegal fireworks can blend into the legal firework activity during those hours on the Fourth of July night itself, and so it is harder to locate a specific address or location sometimes in a neighborhood until you can actually see something flying in the air and kind of hone in on it. There are consequences to prohibiting all fireworks. There's no guarantee that traditionally illegal fireworks will be caught or enforced in a greater number. We believe that, again, much of the enforcement would probably be people that had gone to a neighboring jurisdiction and purchased safe and sane fireworks, and then were violating our prohibition, would probably be caught up in the enforcement. And then there would be a significant impact to Elk Grove nonprofits that use the fireworks booths every year as a significant and sometimes sole source of fundraising for their efforts. And again, option two is one that, at least in the early years of this effort, we don't believe we would see a significant decrease in legal firework activity if we move towards a prohibition at this time. Option three would be to continue the efforts we started in 2018 and 2019 and continue to pursue efforts that we would be able to undertake with our regional partners and with our partner agencies here in Elk Grove to catch as many and deter as many illegal firework users or activity as we can. There's always technology coming out in the way of social media and phone apps that would be able to allow folks to provide us intel on locations we'd be able to monitor or visit or respond to. There's always the ability to increase our messaging through social media and through traditional media, that we're out there and we're actively looking for violators. There are changes to our code that we've been discussing with CSD since we first undertook this in 2018 that we can continue to pursue related to the fine structure and the way we use citations. In 2019, the council passed a resolution, adopted a resolution, to clearly identify that the CSD fire staff were designated to issue administrative citations, and we also changed our enforcement strategy so that we began to cite per firework versus per firework incident. So if you had five bottle rockets, let's say, you got a fine of five times the amount, one for each of those bottle rockets or bricks of illegal fireworks or mortars or aerial shells, whatever we came across. So the fines where the previous year had been fairly low per incident of $100, $200, or $500, were raised up into the $1,000 in our most serious contacts in this last year. We feel like continuing to pursue regulatory or code change efforts along with our partners at the CSD, we would be able to leverage the enforcement that we've began the last couple of years and continue to expand on there. That's all I have for the presentation this evening. Those three options are what we've been able to put together since you made the request in July, and both myself, the police chief, and the CSD fire staff have all been involved in these conversations and the development of those projects, and so we're all here and available for questions.
Any questions? Councilman?
Shane, is there, other than boots on the street, so to speak, is there any other methods that can be used for patrolling at night with those? I mean, is it something that they could use drones on, or is that?
Chief, would you want to speak to the use of the parameters there? I mean, other than the obvious of we wouldn't want them shot out of the sky, there's probably some tactical disadvantages or complications there?
There are some challenges in deploying a drone. I'd like to say, we, as you know, recently launched our real-time information center. I would see that as one opportunity to maybe heat map the calls for service, to then more accurately deploy our resources to those areas in which we're receiving a high number of calls. Shane mentions several technology pieces that are in place. In fact, Mr. Revel's email that came outlines some of those that I think we would have an opportunity to take a look at and, you know, employ our community to help us be our eyes and ears for when we're not able to be in every part of the neighborhood. But the drones themselves, excuse me, I'm not sure that's the best use of that equipment. There's been some agencies that have had success and others who don't employ that for various reasons.
Yeah, I mean, I imagine there's a danger of being shut down, same thing even, probably, I assume they don't, do they keep police helicopters down during that time, or are they up high enough where they don't worry about it?
It's becoming increasingly more difficult for them to fly at lower altitudes during that time period.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Suen?
Yeah, chief, has there been any inquiry into either the VIPS or the, your chief's advisory board or any of the ambassadors in terms of volunteering? I know it's a family time for everybody, but I didn't know if there's any interest in volunteering.
Yeah, there's some safety challenges with who we would ask to be out and to be our eyes and ears, but we are this year going to take on some new creative measures, one of which is our VIPS. My good friend Chief McLaughlin's here in the room, and he and I have had conversations about our role this year, that we would have a coordinated effort toward enforcement, but even starting in May and June, have a coordinated effort toward public surface announcements, if you will, through our various PIO offices and social media, that we would clearly outline what we're asking of our community and then, you know, highlight the illegal activities and the enforcement that'll be a part of that, kind of a coordinated effort here.
Can we do $10 for a spot on a violator? Is that an incentive to the public to?
We can certainly look at that.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. At this point, I want to open for public comment. We have a number of speakers sign up to speak. First speaker is James Parrish.
Good evening, I'm Jim Parrish, and, you know, been here in town for a long time, but I've been with the Elks for 10 years, and fireworks is one of our big fundraisers. And in the 10 years I've been in Elk, every year I've helped work the fireworks booth, everything from being just the plain old worker to, for several years, being the chairman of the fireworks committee. The money that we take in from the fireworks basically goes into what I call our community fund. It enables us to do a lot of things in the community. One of the things that's been brought up tonight is like the food. One of the things that's been brought up tonight is like the food bank. Well, we donated, well, got done donating two large barrels of food and next week we're delivering a bunch of turkeys to them so that other people can have a nice Thanksgiving. And we're also donating turkeys out of our funds for Christmas for the same reason. But we do other things than just the food bank. We help out some of the local, like the soccer teams for the kids where the kids don't have enough money or the parents don't have enough money to play soccer, but we donate money to them so that the kids can play soccer and they can have shoes and uniform, whatever it is they need. We do a lot of things for veterans because I think we owe a lot to veterans. I mean, we owe basically our way of life to the sacrifices they've all made. We bought socks and shoes and toiletries and put on barbecues for them and if they can't, you know, come, they come down in wheelchairs and everything else. So it's some things to do. All the, the favorite thing that we do for me is we give dictionaries to third graders and a lot of the schools here in the Elk Grove School District. And the dictionaries are more than just a dictionary. About a third of the book is about our country, about our statutes and the constitution. And it's about countries around the world. Because so many of our kids, their parents and grandparents are originally not from here, they come from other places. So they can find out about where they and their friends and their parents and stuff came from. My favorite one is one day we were giving out books to a third grade school, you know, third graders, and the little boy asked me, can I keep this book? He'd never, ever had a book of his own. I told him, yes, put your name in it, it's yours forever. And these kids, they, because we just gave some out at a Mac school here just a couple of weeks ago. And the teachers tell them, these kids, keep these dictionaries year after year. And then they keep having them. But in the ten years I've been with the Elks, I've been on the board for over half that time.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish.
Oh, oh, three minutes already?
Sorry.
Would you just, would you please just restate your position on the matter? I assume it's don't ban fireworks altogether.
No, I don't think we should ban. I, we need to keep the legal ones, the illegal ones, hey, throw them away, I don't care.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Van De Paul. And following Mike is Ryan Masters.
Thank you for the city and council for having me here. I'm my backup for Jim. My name's Mike Van De Paul. I represent the Elk, of Elk's Lodge as well, number two-five-seven-seven. We're located off of Survey Road near Grant Line. I'm the chairperson of the fireworks committee. And we have a booth on Elk Grove Boulevard right there by O'Reilly's and we've been there for many, many years. Our lodge is small, we have two-hundred members or so, but we're big on caring and sharing and supporting the community, as Jim mentioned. The Elks pride ourselves in helping the community, schools, veterans, and youth. Nearly all the proceeds we receive from the fireworks booth leaves our lodge as donations to other groups. Very little is kept, kept in the lodge. Some of the programs that we donate to or sponsor include student assistant programs, teacher assistance programs for Title I schools, student scholarships, Christmas programs, holiday adoptive family bicycle, purchasing bicycles for kids for Christmas. We support the Elk Grove Food Bank, veterans assistance programs, as Jim mentioned. We participate in the Yountville Veterans Home activities and Mather Veterans as well. We have involved with the Sacramento Stand Down for homeless veterans. And we participate in homeless, support of homeless assistance programs. We're involved with scouting, drug awareness, soccer shoot for kids, as well as physical occupational and speech therapy and eye exams for children. So we are very diverse in our assistance of the community, youth, and veterans. So many of the programs that I just mentioned are directly funded by what we receive from the fireworks booth. And if we were to lose this source of support, then our lodge would be forced to stop contributing or sponsoring many of these programs. And this would be a heartbreak for us, but it'll also negatively impact those we serve. So just in conclusion, I just wanted to say that Elk Grove Elk's Lodge, number two-five-seven-seven, opposes option number two, which is the ban. And we support option number three. And we'd be willing to assist as best we can in disseminating information to support this option and improve safety in the community. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ryan Masters. Following Ryan Masters is Dylan Hertzenson.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I have a feeling there's quite a few people signed up to speak and I have a feeling they're probably all going to hit on the same issue. I know I'm not in favor of option two, banning all fireworks. Maybe we do a quick straw poll and if that doesn't even have a chance of passing, that saves everybody some time here.
Sure, I'm open to that.
I like that. Is there anybody that wants to ban all fireworks?
Yeah, no?
Okay, you're welcome for your three minutes, but it's not even an option.
I was just going to share, yeah, I'm a youth pastor. Again, thank you council mayor, vice mayor for being able to have a speak. We're all opposed to this idea of, of, of making these fireworks illegal. And on behalf of my students, as a youth pastor, one of the greatest choices that I have is to be able to tell a student there is no reason, especially money, why you won't be able to go to a summer camp or a winter camp or a trip with our church. Be able to have these funds that we raise through our booth, as the chairman of that booth, those funds make it possible to be able to send our kids and not have to have money be an issue why our junior high students and our high school students can't go to a camp. So, yeah, again, we, we very much oppose that, the ban of all fireworks. I, I would suggest, I think there are a lot of really good ideas of what Elk Grove can do moving forward. As the chairman of my booth, I spent every single day that fireworks were on sale in my booth, talking to people as they came. And when I noticed someone that I didn't recognize, I was able to say, where are you from? And almost half the people that came to my booth were all from outside of Elk Grove. They were all people that had moved from the Bay Area. They were all people that had moved from various parts of, of Southern California coming to, for more affordable housing in Elk Grove. And so I think as Elk Grove grows, this is a fantastic opportunity to be able to look into new technology and new ways to getting the word out. And I can speak on behalf of all of the other booths and chairmans here that when those strategies come out and are agreed upon, we will be the first ones to take those strategies to the front lines as people are coming to our booths and asking questions and learning more about what to do and what is legal and what is illegal. So we're here for you and we're vehemently opposed to this ban of fireworks. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Masters. Dylan Hertzenson, following Dylan is Richard DeHera.
Okay. I'd just like to say, thank you very much. That's very good to hear that you don't know anyone wants to ban fireworks. That's, we make, just stop. I'm Dylan Hertzenson. I'm in the Franklin marching band and I'm representing a hundred and twenty band members who are all, I'm pretty sure, adamantly against banning fireworks. Last summer, we collectively made twenty-one thousand dollars just on fireworks sales, which is our entire transportation budget, which lets us go to everywhere in Northern California, from Merced to Fairfield. And it's very good to hear that, yes, don't want to ban fireworks, that's really good. Thank you. That's, I don't need to tell you anything else.
Excellent, welcome, thank you. Next speaker is Richard DeHera. And following Rich is Diana Garcia.
So, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members. I'm a Franklin High School parent. I've been part of the fireworks fundraiser booster for TNT fireworks for the last eight years. My wife and I have been the coordinator and chairpersons for the last four years. Reason why we do sacrifice our time and efforts is for the benefit of the Franklin High School students. It's a large fundraiser for Franklin High School booster groups. This has been a longstanding fundraiser for over fifteen years. The fireworks fundraiser dollars, they go directly to the Franklin High School booster groups for the benefit of the students. Groups are like bands, theater, leadership groups, cheer, wrestling, dance, basketball, football, groups like that. And some of these groups rely heavily on the funding from the fireworks fundraiser for their students. Different things that they might do with it are, they pay for competition entry fees, they pay for transportation, uniforms, wrestling mats, you know, different sorts of things like that. So a ban on fireworks would have a significant negative impact on these groups, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Diana Garcia, following Diana is Rich Gillespie.
Hi, mayor, vice mayor, and councilman. Thank you for taking the time to hear us out, even though you've already expressed your oppose to banning fireworks. I'm a Toby Johnson middle school parent. I actually work really closely with the Franklin Band because my daughter will be attending Franklin High next year. We were actually given the opportunity this past year, or in two thousand and nineteen, to do the fireworks booth with Franklin High to raise money. Our band doesn't have too many fundraising options and we have a new band director that started last year and we're trying to raise money, you know, to get a trailer due to the amount of things that our band is now participating in, almost as if we were in a high school. We do a lot of band reviews, we go to a lot of places, and there are a lot of things that we need. A lot of the uniforms, the garment bags, things like that that we use need to be replaced at this time. And as parents, of course, we can't afford that. One of the things that I'm looking to do is take over the fireworks booth from Rich as his daughter has, you know, graduated and they've moved on, they need somebody else to take it over. And I'm looking at this as an opportunity to help raise money so that I don't have to come out of pocket as much next year for, and the next four years for my daughter being a freshman and going to her senior year because she wants to do band, she wants to do marching, she wants to do the symphonic band. And, you know, that may be limited if we can't afford to pay for band without this fundraising option as well. So we appreciate you guys banning it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Rich Gillespie. Following Rich is Kimberly Sylvester.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members. Thrilled to hear that you're against the ban. I'm a, Rich Gillespie, I'm a president of the Franklin Theater Association. It's one of the groups that is supported by Rich DeHera's efforts. It, the fireworks booths are the number one source of our funding. And as, as you know, as school funding is, is getting harder and dwindles, we have to look to other ways to, to support the arts and, and this is one of the ways we do it. So I, in the interest of brevity, I just want to thank you for your straw poll and, and your, and not banning the fireworks booth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Kimberly Sylvester. Following Kimberly is Peter Wright.
As many of our supporters have said, thank you so much for opposing the option two. I wanted to touch a little bit on option number one. Moving the red, white, and blue would also increase our revenue because we do have a lot of people that come and buy fireworks earlier throughout the week. We're open for seven days in the state of California. And with moving that to a different night, it would actually increase revenue, thus paying you guys more tax money. So it's a win-win. I do understand, as mentioned, it does take a lot more police effort and, and money to produce that extra night of festivities. But that would also increase the amount of, as you've heard, fundraising funds for all of these nonprofits. I'm the chairperson for Sun Grove Church and without the fundraiser, we do not get to send any of our students, we do not get to reach students in our community in multiple high schools and multiple middle schools. And so I would be in favor of attempting to move the red, white, and blue to July third. I come from a hometown where that has been a success for multiple years in the, the city of Healdsburg. And that is something that I am in favor of, but I want to thank you once again for your consideration for option number two. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Peter Wright, following Peter is Rando Rotters.
Mayor, council, thank you so much for the straw poll and not agreeing to ban fireworks throughout. Just really quick, again, I'm also opposed to banning all fireworks. And I want to say, like my colleague said, not only does it affect tax revenue for the city, but it also affects how the city operates with how our community deals with stuff and the money that is earned through the sale of fireworks by nonprofits goes really directly right back into our community. For our organization at Sun Grove Church, with me working with youth, that directly affects our youth and their families that live in our communities. So without that revenue, we can't directly affect our own community. So thank you very much for doing that straw poll. Thank you for not banning fireworks.
And thank you for...
Thank you for growing a beard for Movember.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rando Abrahters. And following Rando is Dennis Revel.
Looks like Randall grew a beard, too.
Yeah, it's a little goatee. Yeah. All right. I just want to take after him a little bit. Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, and all the city council members, thank you for the already making it easy on us. And there goes my dynamite three-minute speech, but I, I do double down on everything everybody else said. We, most, most of the fireworks funds and the profits go to help youth. And of course, that would, that saves the city a lot of money and of course, tax money goes back to the city. I, I agree with option one. I think that'd be a good idea, whether it's one particular day or just having it on a weekend, might, might be a good turnout for everybody. And I suggest that, I'm not speaking for all the other fireworks booths and organizations, but I think we could help in the idea of partnering up with CSD and the police department by offering some, some safe and sane bonuses or gifts. For example, if somebody calls in or points to their, somebody down the street and says, okay, they're doing it, they do it every year, well, some fireworks booth, I'd be willing to do it. So we, we would donate to anybody snitching on somebody else some safe and sane fireworks. Because I, I think, I speak for pretty much everybody. I mean, everybody kind of hates it. I've got a next-door neighbor that's been doing it for ten years. I snitched on him the last couple of years and he, he buys a five-hundred-dollar big one from me every year. I haven't told him I snitched. But anyway...
You do know these meetings are broadcast, right?
Oh, man, can you erase that part? I'm not telling my address, but he, he, he got fined. He got, he wrote up a ticket, I had the CSG guy go over there, he wrote him up a ticket, got fined, but it wasn't much of a fine, so it didn't affect him. He makes good money. And so, but if the fine was bigger and if somebody came in and took out some poundage of fireworks, because he shoots them all off, and they end up on my roof, they end up in my pool and they, and, and nobody sweeps it up when it blows into my yard, so I, I hate it. So if there's any way we can help to do it, call on me, I'll be one of your best agents out there and erase that part about my neighbor. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Dennis Revel.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members. My name is Dennis Revel, president of Revel Communications, appearing here this evening on behalf of our client, TNT Fireworks. You've received a communication from me yesterday already. And as I said in that email, I'd like to compliment staff for a very thorough and objective report, staff report on this matter. I'd also like to probably say something that is no surprise or secret to you and that you enjoy one of the best fire departments that I've had the honor of working with and both in Chief McLaughlin, Morgana, and everyone in the department. You, you were very blessed in that regard. I would like to speak to some of the emerging enforcement options that I discussed or offered up in my email to you and share with you maybe even some recent developments. Social host, pleased to hear that you do have that capability within your existing ordinance, is becoming the, almost the defining enforcement tool in the last twelve to eighteen months. San Jose just adopted one. City of Santa Ana is considering adopting a social host and companion with bringing on a drone program. Surprisingly, you are well ahead of them in having four drones, they have none. And whether city is, permits state-approved fireworks or doesn't, they're trying to deal with this and the recipe for the legal and enforcement solutions in every city is never the same, but there are some common components. And clearly... and enforcement solutions in every city is never the same. But there are some common components. And clearly, they're looking at that buffet of options. The city of Seaside, which I cited in my letter, is a classic example, much smaller than you. They have two officers who man a drone program. They're now in their second year of their drone program with two drones, 4K drones. I was blown away with the visual impact that they were able to capture at 10, 11 o'clock at night in a very foggy community unlike Elk Grove. And it has had a dramatic impact because they've done it in conjunction with the Social Host ordinance and being able to cite people because of the drone, with the drone, they capture the GPS location of the houses, confirm it with ground personnel and issue those citations. City of Roanoke Park just adopted a Social Host ordinance and used the Nailam app, having all of their city employees download the app on their smartphone. And when they saw illegal fireworks activity, use the smartphone to report that and they had to agree to become the complaining witness against that activity. They went from two citations to 59 citations in one year. And it had a tremendous impact on the illegal fireworks activity. So I'd be happy to work with Chief Albright and Chief McLaughlin and the city staff to provide any information on any of these. We maintain a good resource library.
Excellent. Thank you sir. Appreciate it. Seeing no additional speaker, want to close public comment. Council deliberation and direction. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Well, I think we established option two is off the table. If you outlaw fireworks, only outlaws have fireworks. So I would look at moving the red, white and blue. I think there's some merit to exploring that idea. Maybe to, you know, to like a, the Saturday following or preceding the actual date of the holiday. I think that frees up our resources so that they can man that event and, and also be prepared for the actual night of the holiday to, to be out in the neighborhoods. I think there's some interesting ideas that were put forth in Mr. Revel's email. And I certainly think, no matter what, option three should always be in play. So that's where I stand.
Okay, Councilman Sun.
Yeah, so I also had a couple of questions. So in terms of moving red, white and blue, the staff report says it could also result in lower attendance. And I'm just wondering if, what the rationale for that is, seems like if
It's not on the holiday. It's not on the holiday.
Yeah, but like, well, I guess I'm looking at from, from what Vice Mayor said too, is if you're doing it like the weekend before or something, kind of theoretically just free people up to go to, to both events.
Yeah, Councilman, the rationale behind that thought is obviously, it's untested at this point. We have a tradition, other cities operated the red, white and blue itself almost 10 years. And the Chamber of Commerce operated prior to that. And it's traditionally been on that night. And so, there's always that fear that you're sort of messing with success at that point and that we may see some, and drop off and it may build back. There may be no drop off, but it's something that we certainly wanted to call out when discussing the option.
Okay. And then, the reason I'm, I'm, I'm a bit reluctant, just because I know we've got, we have good attendance. And so I'm, you know, I'm looking to mess with that. The other, the other question I have is, we heard from so many stakeholders here tonight who all have, you know, circles of, of influence. And I'm just wondering, have we taken advantage of that in terms of education? And a lot of them, you know, we heard one of the youths here from Franklin High School. I want to thank you for coming out, young man. But there's, there's a lot of connections to youth. A lot of these nonprofits benefit youth. A lot of connections to youth, and not to say that youth are the violators, but there's just, it seems like there's a, if there's a way to tap into all those folks to put more eyes on the street, to disseminate and communicate basically the risk of, of using illegal fireworks and what it could do to, to, you know, these folks if we had chosen or leaned that way. Have we looked into taking advantage of that in terms of a public safety announcement or something like that?
I, I think Mr. Revel brings up some really valid points in his email and some strategies that we have not necessarily employed, technology mainly, and an app that would be universally accessible for neighbors, for youth groups to be able to report that activity and for us to take the action based upon those reports. That, and there's some other really good ideas that I think we should have an opportunity to employ and hopefully realize some success from that.
Yeah, okay. Well, so, so with, with that, I guess what, what I'm leaning towards is, let's, let's try that. Let's try, you know, employing smartphone apps and leveraging the, you know, all the folks here tonight before, I would say, before we actually move red, white and blue. Because I, if, if we can not disrupt that at this point, I'd, I'd prefer to do that. So let's, and, and up the fines. I agree. I didn't think the fines were heavy enough last time. So I think when somebody gets hit with that, I think they're going to think twice. So, that's my thought.
Yeah. Councilman Detrick.
Yeah, I'm willing to look at the, the option of moving it, you know. You're right, we have the attendance. Actually, the attendance is probably almost sometimes oversaturated. So it may be, it may be a blessing in disguise to move it on one side or another. I know from the experience that the food bank had on the, they used to have the run for independents. And when they moved it off of the, the day, their, their attendance almost cut in half on people signing up for the run. Because people are coming out to celebrate the national holiday. And I think that's what a big part of this is. Maybe, Brad, maybe you can answer, people kept talking about the sales tax revenue we get from fireworks. I don't believe we get any sales tax revenue from fireworks, do we?
The sales tax that the city receives is just the one cent of the, of the seven and three-quarters. I believe, I can't say for sure fireworks are subject to sales tax. I believe the people that are in the booths and if they're collecting the sales tax, we'd be able to have a better ready answer.
So does that go, so if you guys are, let's say that you're using TNT, do you run it back through TNT or is it, how, how does the sales tax get?
Come on up, come on up. Yeah, come on up.
Come on up to the podium.
Come, come on up to the podium. Yeah.
Come on up Jim.
Yeah, my knees are over.
I know at the Elks, at the end, we always take and write a check for the sales tax and send it into the county with our quarterly, I think every quarter we send our sales tax in. So we do pay sales tax
Okay.
and send it in on all fireworks that we sell.
But just, just so everybody's clear, we only get a, one cent out of the sales tax. We don't get the whole thing. So, but, so the total, the total generation of all the fireworks that are sold in the city does not generate very much money for the city. But I guess we do get a little bit.
I, I don't know. It's still got to be a fair amount because I know we're one of the smaller booths and we still sell like 14,000, 15,000 or 16,000 dollars worth a year. And we're a small booth. So a lot of the other ones I know, like one child, and so, you know, they made like $25,000 on theirs.
Yeah, but if you take, if you take 8% of your, even $100,000 and then we get 1% of that, it's, it's not, it's not a tremendous amount of money.
There, there's quite a few fireworks booths here in town. Because I know like at Calvine and Elk Grove Floren, there's four booths just on that one corner. Or on those four corners. Every corner's got one. So there, there's quite a few, you know, I've never actually gone out and counted them.
The ones on the north side of Calvine, we don't get anything. That's Sacramento County. That's not Sac.
But there's two, two on the south side of Calvine too. And, and we're on Elk Grove Boulevard and then they'll go down, there's at least three of them in, whereby, where
Thank you.
where Riley's used to be and stuff. I'm not Riley's, but O'Reilly's Auto Parts and stuff. And they're, they're all down there. I see a lot of them.
Okay, thank you Jim. I'm not done.
Sorry.
So Shane, do you think the fines are high enough?
The, the fine structure we currently use is given to us by state law. And so there's a fine structure, a bail schedule if you will, that's in the government code that we then use through our municipal code. The strategy we employed this last year, citing per count rather than per total violation, is our best and probably only strategy that I can think of to make sure we're being as impactful as we can with the fines.
Is our Social Host ordinance strong enough to address issues on this?
I would say we'd go back and look at the language that we've used the last couple of years and make sure there's nothing there that as we, like I said, have been in talks with the CSD about finding ways to beef up the language and to incorporate them into enforcement strategies and the municipal code and that sort of thing. There's an opportunity there to look at changes in code that we might be able to beef up something there. I couldn't say one way or the other yet, but we would want to look at it sooner rather than later and have it back to you probably in February or March so that we would certainly be well ahead of the firework season.
Yeah, if the rest of the council's willing to, I'd like to have that brought back and make sure it's, you know, tightened up. And then the last issue is people talk about, you know, the, you know, the communication and getting the message out there. The problem is, they're buying the fireworks illegally. So that's, it, the rules are only applied to people that are honest to begin with. I mean, that's something that, you know, our, our chief and his team deal with every day. It's, it's not the honest people you got to worry about. It's, it's the people who think they're above the law or, or they can circumvent the law. You know, I mean, people that, you know, they talk about changing the speed limits here around town. I mean, I've had people pass me at 75, 80 miles an hour on Elk Grove Floren and Sheldon Road. So I mean, the laws are there, but it's, that only applies to the people that are willing to support those laws. So anyway, I'd like to see if we can bring, bring back a, possibly if needed, a stronger Social Host ordinance.
Sure, I'll support that.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Do you need another council member to voice, support of that for our consensus?
So, Mayor, are you asking?
I'm asking the council, yeah. You, we've got two now, you know. Okay, got three. Right Shane, you got it. All right, Councilmember White.
I think the whole purpose of this is to figure out a way where we can decrease the amount of activity in illegal fireworks. And while I think option one and moving the date could be a good idea, I also see that it doesn't necessarily reduce the illegal activity that's happening in our city, which is what was, what was put in our report here. Additionally, it increases in, there's a fiscal impact, 15 to 25,000 dollars. And, and that's only on our side. I don't know if CSD would also have a fiscal impact as well too. I would like to keep it on July 4th because that's widely known. Everybody attends it. It's the same day all the time. I don't want to have to figure out what it's going to be 2020, 2021, 2022 and, and whatnot. I would like to look at one, tightening up whatever the fee is and if we can, but also keeping it, keeping it the same. I definitely don't want to ban it. My, my kids enjoy the fireworks. We come out to the salute to red, white and blue and then we go home and we do it as a family. So I would like to still keep it the same, but definitely put better messaging out there.
Okay, awesome. Go ahead.
One other thing.
Go ahead.
I forgot to mention all the issues that were brought up for all the different types of ways that we, whether it's the app on the phone or the various items that were talked about. I support you guys working as a team to get all those items that we can possible.
Okay. I, you know, I, I would, I would not support moving the celebration. I think I'm real big on tradition and look, if it's successful and we're bringing people out, people kind of look forward to that. And I, I don't know, be, we would be establishing a new tradition if we were to move it to the weekend before or the day before. But I think there's something special about the 4th of July, you know, I mean, coming out and relaxing and, and, you know, celebrating with the community. And I've witnessed this red, white and blue celebration grow. And I would hate to, to take the thunder out of it by, by moving it. So I would be in agreement that the gentleman, Mr. Revel, he made some great suggestion. I think that I would encourage staff to have a conversation with the chief and try to figure out other commuters and how they do it. But obviously, I'm hearing option three. All right. Okay, you have enough?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
You like tradition?
Yeah.
19 years, we had a tradition of being from districts.
You got to do that, huh? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks guys. All right. Next item.
Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. I'm going to be navigating us through the last four items of this agenda. For these items, I don't have formal presentations, but if you do have any questions or if there's anything you want me to pull up, I can see what I can do about pulling those informational items up. But without further ado, I'll start into item 10.4, which is consider appointment of the city's member representative of the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District's Board of Trustees. I was contacted by the Vector Control District in that our current appointee, Lyndon Hawkins, his appointment is going to be coming up for a potential review here at the end of the year. He was last appointed in 2015 for a four-year term. And Mr. Hawkins has always been our representative to the Vector Control District. I reached out to Mr. Hawkins. He said he is interested to continue to serve. He's also here this evening in attendance and I believe has signed up to speak. If he has any comments or can answer any questions at the council. What the question before the council would be is that there's the opportunity to reappoint Mr. Hawkins to a four-year term. That's what's written in the staff resolution that's been presented. But as another alternative option, you could open it up for appointment. So without any further questions, I think we do have Mr. Hawkins sign up to speak.
Okay, any questions? Nope. Okay. Want to open up a comment, invite Mr. Lyndon Hawkins to come on up.
Jason, we still have 10.3 up.
I'm excited about the mosquito board and I'd be happy to answer any questions. We have about four drones over there too. And FAA certified, certified by Department of Pesticide Regulation. We get a lot of good maps and stuff from the drone activity, trying to find mosquitoes out there.
Lyndon, thank you for your
Yep.
years of service to the, and I would support moving this motion forward when we get there to reappoint you.
Well, I appreciate the city council from way back when, when it was first formed as a city council and having the opportunity to serve. It's, it's a great group of people, working with the board over there. One of the mottos over there, it's kind of an unwritten one, is that we want to be recognized as the best board in the nation. And we are, is without a doubt.
Excellent. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Lyndon, what's the, how was the West Isle this year? Was it?
Oh, West Isle was down this year. We were really lucky. And we're not sure why. The only negative that we have to deal with is we have some invasive species now in Sacramento and Placer County. It's the yellow fever mosquito and it transmits malaria and other, other diseases. The problem is, it's a day biter rather than the dawn and dusk. And it's going to create some real problems for us.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That there are no additional speakers having to speak, want to close public comment. Council deliberation and direction.
Move staff's recommendation.
Second. Got a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. Next item.
I'll take us on to item 10.5, which consider a resolution shifting the annual summer recess of city council regular meetings from the first meeting in August to the first meeting in July. The genesis of this item came from staff discussions last summer about changes that we could take at the city hall. And one of the suggestions put forward was to consider going to a, our summer recess, the first meeting in July. Primary reason is that as we get the budget approved and we start rolling into the new budget year, having continuity in the council meetings helps with getting the approvals that we need in order to get the funds out the door and get the money spent for residents. Having that break at that first meeting in August kind of puts a little bit of a, a stop in our process. And so when staff looked at what all the best options were, when we looked back, June starting to get a little bit too early in the process, not to mention that we want to get to the budget approval, but also deadlines that come with the end of the fiscal year, we really did narrow in and saw that the best option was taking that break in the first meeting in July. Second meeting in July, we had a few more deadlines that come up that are time-sensitive as far as consolidating with the county on tax rolls and things of that nature. And so when we started looking at these options, July became, first meeting in July became a good option. Not to mention that it also coincides with many of the regional agencies as far as their vacation schedule, coincides well with the school schedules, and it coincides really well with the 4th of July that we were just talking about. So as part of the city's birthday and all that kind of good stuff as far as timing. Put out some other options of just going into August and looking further into August, and you just start kind of grasping at straws in terms of taking a summer recess. What this action is doing is it's very focused to maintain our regular meeting agenda. our regular meeting agenda, to maintain it the same as those second and fourth Wednesday meetings. We'd still be maintaining the winter breaks in the second meetings of November and December. So the action that's proposed through the resolution is just to move the summer vacation and consider moving that from that first meeting in August to the first meeting in July.
As a parent of an elementary school child, I want to thank staff, whoever suggested this. Appreciate that.
All right, any questions? Want to open up a comment? Seeing no members public signed up to speak, want to close public comment? Council deliberation, direction.
Move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. Next item.
That'll take us on to item ten point six, which is consider implementing terms for the planning commission and/or provide direction on policies for recruitment, composition, and appointment of the planning commission. This item's returning back from discussions from October ninth. At that council meeting, we'd done an overview just in terms of regional comparison. There was two kind of comparison sets in which we went with cities by population, cities in the region, of how they handle planning commission appointments and the composition of the planning commission. Where the discussion got on October ninth was to talk about terms for those that were serving in office. So those terms were added into the tables, and that was presented with the staff report. So that's the information that's been returned from staff. So we're open for the deliberation, the continuation of this discussion.
Okay, this one, want to open for a public comment? I have two speakers signed up to speak. First one is George Murphy. The following George Murphy is McKenzie Lazer.
George Who? Good evening. Good evening. You might have guessed I'd be here tonight. Stephanie, I heard your comments at the beginning of the meeting, and I have to agree. We're going through this exercise because we have a gun door. This is the byproduct of that, and it's sad to say. Just a few thoughts. As far as the terms of service goes, I really want you to keep in mind the benefits of institutional history on the commission. You know, there've been several times in my career up here that I've thought about maybe resigning, but somebody beat me to it. And I felt that because, just because of honoring the institution and keeping continuity, that it was important I stayed, and I've stayed. And some people say I've stayed, and I've stayed, and I've stayed. But it's important to have that continuity. And Pat, you said it there today. You thought maybe two years? Respectfully would argue to that point. I'm still learning. But it is a process, and it does take some years to get up there and get full speed. So the other thing is the service terms. I think that if you could do, if you would consider, at a minimum, two four-year terms, that would give the appointee, any new commissioner, time to get up to speed, learn the ropes, and bring on, before you brought on somebody new. Again, it goes institutional history. And it would still provide you with some opportunities for turnover. And it wouldn't require that person in the middle of an eight-year term, in the first four years, to have to reapply for the position. You would just let them roll over for the next four years and continue the continuity on the commission. And of course, they should be staggered. I believe it's important that we have a district representative on the commission. We all, like you, don't live in, you can't live in every district. You can't live in every neighborhood. Each individual commissioner brings a certain knowledge from their district to the commission. I depend on Frank. I depend on McKenzie. I depend on everybody that lives in different districts, as they depend on me sometimes. It's very important. And I think appointments should be made, when they're made from a district, with the mayor considering who he may want to appoint, to appoint that in consultation with that district member, because they also know the people within that district. It would provide a good mix and maybe help you work together a little bit on that. There's other avenues to provide for services as outlined in the staff report. One of them is the design review committee. I hate design reviews. I sit up there, I'm not an architect. And we have to decide. May I continue, Mr. Mayor?
I'll give you ten more seconds. Please wrap it up.
I'll try. Design review committee. An old idea is council advisory committees at councils. We're big enough now. And lastly, I think, I was kind of disappointed that I wasn't notified by way of an email today. I know it's on the internet website, but being busy, we all don't always get there. But as a courtesy, it would have been nice to know about this. I learned about it late. And we can provide some insight into our positions, or what the position's about to staff, that they may not have thought of, to provide you with information, too. So I just want to bring that up. So thank you for the extra time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. McKenzie Lazer. On McKenzie is Randy Becker.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm piggybacking off of George. In fact, I called George to let him know that this was on the agenda tonight, and I called all of the commission, because none of us actually knew. So we found out by a third party that this was on the agenda, and that sat really, really uncomfortably with me, because it affects me. And I spend my time bi-monthly, just like you. I read plenty of staff reports, just like you, and I donate my time to the city. And I serve on this commission because I care. I do want to let you know that the term limits do make sense to me. However, I've been serving for three years now, and I had experience in the planning world at the state level. It's a whole different ballgame at the local government level, and I'm telling you, I'm just now starting to get my feet under me. So to say that we're going to learn this in a two-year or four-year term limit, it's actually doing a disservice, because planning just doesn't work that way. Projects take sometimes seven to ten years to actually break ground, as you well know. So you're going to lose a lot by adding term limits. I do think we do need some diversification in the planning commission, and I think that can be done through vetting and potentially two four-year term limits, but again, you're going to lose some continuity there. We do need some diversification, but that could be done through vetting. And we would also like to see if, when you make the selections for committees, boards, trail committee commissions, if you could do that during closed session so that it doesn't become a political minefield, because it's been, a lot of bad comments have come up about how these appointments are made during meetings, and the conversations that are had about the candidates actually applying for those positions. So just keep that in mind. As your chair, I am only making comments for myself, so I do want you to know that these are just how I feel, not how the actual planning commission feels. Thank you for your time.
McKenzie, I have a question for you. How would you propose diversifying it?
We've reached a population now, as you saw in your report, that we could potentially expand to seven members. I think we should potentially look at expanding our council to seven members. We are a large city with gearing to hit over two hundred thousand in population, and we need to take some of the weight off of the five people on the commission, or council, or committees. It wouldn't hurt to have more representation in a city this size.
And I think that makes sense, but you know, obviously I haven't spoken to the other planning commissioner. What are their thoughts? Have you spoken to them about that? Expanding?
I have not spoken to them. That's just my view, that I've, I mean, Sacramento has seven, or I believe, seven or nine.
I don't know that we want to sit here and use Sacramento as a model of how we ought to do things in Elk Grove, McKenzie. I mean, if we're being honest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I think we could have seven.
Awesome. Just clarification, Mr. Hobbs, are we even permitted to discuss appointments in closed session?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, Randy Becker.
First of all, I would be awful angry if we did things behind closed doors. I'd carry a pick stick, because it has gotten political. And it's gotten political because people show up here, they want to spout their mouths, and then they leave quickly. Elk Grove's a hot mess, but they don't show up. All political. I said last time, I could support adding two planning commissioners, but what's the mechanism? Right now, especially going to by district, every district should have a planning commission representative, even if it's your choice. Every district needs to be represented. Every district. So if we do add two, what's going to be the mechanism? And it needs to be vetted also by the public. We need to know it, so we can add our comments. As far as the extent of the timeline, based upon what I've heard and conversations, it sounds like eight years is a good timeline. I'm not saying that we should have a term limit of eight years, but at least a conversation. I think last meeting, there was comment that three-fifths of the planning commission had been turned over in the last five years, if that's correct. So as time goes along, people will choose to stay or go. But besides this council, I believe your planning commission's probably the next most important commission, and I don't want to slight any other commissions, but based upon what they do, they're your right arm.
George told me the planning commissioner was more important.
Well, they might be. To him, they probably are. They volunteer. You get voted in, so they probably are.
Well, they're kind of voted in.
Yeah, so to speak. But even if the law wouldn't prohibit, wouldn't prohibit it, I think, you know, the vetting process, I was here, we want qualified people, first of all. Second of all, it would be nice to have diversity. However, qualifications is, to me, is more important. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Seeing that there are no additional members public signed up to speak, want to close public comment. And council deliberation, direction. Members? Go ahead, Councilmember Detrick.
Yeah, Randy, you hit the nail on the head. It's about qualifications. I've beat that in from the day I've been on this council. You know, I look what's inside the box, not the wrapping on the box. To me, it doesn't matter whether you're a man, woman, your color, your skin, those things are irrelevant. It's the quality of the person. And that's the number one thing I look for when I'm looking at an applicant. You know, and not everybody wants to be an appointed person. So you know, sometimes your pool of applicants you're limited with. So if you have a limited pool of applicants that are qualified, you know, it narrows it down usually quite a bit. And as was mentioned, there's been, you know, I think in the last five years, there's been three out of the five council, planning commissioners, turnover. I think the system we have works pretty well. I just assume, rather than reinvent the wheel, I think it works well. You know, we've got George and Frank as the kind of senior members, not only in age, but on their longevity on the planning commission. That might not be politically correct, but you know, I'm a senior citizen too, so I think I'm okay saying it. And you know, and I think there's a huge value to that. And you know, I brought up last meeting, I kind of looked at it, probably took four years before somebody's a good planning commissioner. So you're really, the first four, you're ramping your way up, and then you're solid, and then at least the next four. But in general, we've turned over, within an eight-year period, most people turn over. So I think the system works pretty well, but I do believe having a representative from a district is the way to go. And that's the way it was prior to the directly elected mayor, where each district picked their representative, as they were appointed by the council member from that district. And so I think there needs to be a collaborative, I guess, respect if we're going to move forward, that if, by the general law, if the mayor has the ability to make the final recommendation and then ratified by the council, there has to be a high consideration from the council member of that district. So that's my thought on it.
Okay, members?
I can go, sir. I'm not in favor of moving it to seven, because I feel like if we do add two additional ones, there's going to be one district that is not going to have a second representative. And so I agree with Councilmember Detrick, and I'd like to keep it the same. It seems like, you know, as folks either decide to leave and pass the baton on, that it would be up to us. Mayor, you're the one that has to bring the name up of candidates, and that we would want to make sure that not only the district are representative, but the diversity of it as well, too. So the last round, we did have a woman. We did have, you know, a group of individuals that represented different cultures, background, and whatnot. And the name that got brought up was not neither one of those, right? And so we went with that individual. And so I hope that moving forward, knowing that we want to diversify, but also make sure that we have districts that's represented, that any other appointments that we have to make on this planning commission, that we take a look at that. I'd like to keep it the same.
Okay. Members, anyone else?
We just went through a big change of our governance system, so I'm, you know, after going through that, I'm okay with keeping things the same and just sticking with what we got for now.
Vice Mayor, want to chime in?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I think I said the last time when we discussed this, the only way I'd be in favor of terms is if we went back to where those terms coincided with the appointing council member, with the council member from that district, the way it used to be. You know, you had the incoming council member, for example, I reappointed the planning commissioner that my predecessor had appointed, and so he continued on for several years. I mean, barring that, I think, as the point just made, we've got a pretty significant change in governance that's about to happen, and so let that play out.
But just as a question, if we were to do that, John, that would have to be from a vote of the people, right, to do that? We can't change...
To do what?
I'm trying to remember the comment. We touched on this before, but I just need to refresh her.
So with respect to appointments, the mayor makes the appointment subject to confirmation by the council. Now, the mayor can certainly give deference to the council members in their districts, but ultimately, with an elected mayor, the process is the mayor makes the appointments with confirmation of the council.
Right. But if you, if we wanted to make it, as Vice Mayor talked about, that would take a vote of the people to change.
I'm not sure I understood what Vice Mayor meant. I think you meant that they would coincide with the council member's terms. Is that what I think you said? So I suppose what you could do is you could have staggered terms, but it would be dependent on, to force that type of a change, yes, it would take a vote of the people.
Okay.
It would otherwise just be kind of a informal agreement, unenforceable.
Okay, thank you.
So my biggest thing is, you know, the current process, we have members of the commission that are appointed for a lifetime. And as I made it clear before, that's the part that I'm uncomfortable about. Each council member's vetted every four years. The mayor's vetted every two years. But yet, we have a commission that in order to remove somebody, you have to actually bring them in or impeach them. And say X, Y, and Z, they're not doing a very good job. They're not showing up. I think it's unnecessary to embarrass members that are serving, to volunteer to help the city along. My suggestion is attaching to a term. And I'm not necessarily in support of a term limit, but assigning it to a term where we can actually vet the members on the commission on a regular basis. Other cities do it. I think it makes logical sense. If we attach terms to the commission, it makes logical sense. In addition to that, I think I'm looking at the chart here, and I see cities that are around our size. are around our size, the majority, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but I see that there are seven members. My, my thing is it doesn't necessarily address the diversity issue that was brought up, which prompted us to bring this back. If the current commission is not diverse, then we would have to wait until somebody, you know, resigns or retires before we decide on, on how to diversify this. So there's no solution here that addresses the initial problem, which is there's a lack of diversity. So that's where I stand, but I think you heard from the council, so.
Well, you mentioned tradition. I like the tradition we have, and I think we should keep it the way it is, and I think that's the consensus of the council.
All right, you got, you got the direction. Anything to add? Good? Okay, all right, let's go to the next item.
That'll take us to our final item, which is 10.7, to review city council ad hoc committees. This is prescribed by the council norms and procedures. We look at these at the meeting in November. If you don't give us any direction, our current five existing ad hoc committees, we could bring them back in November 2020 for review. If there's any that you wanted to dissolve, we'd ask you to do a, a vote on that, and then, of course, we just also list the two-by-twos that are out there. Before you were the five committees, ad hoc committees.
Yeah, Mayor? So I, I think Councilmember Huwain, I have already given direction to, to staff on the career pathways, ad hoc committee, so I, I don't think we need that anymore. Vice Mayor, are you, are you good with that?
On which one?
The, the career pathways. I believe we've, we've given staff direction to go work, work on things. Okay, thank you.
Okay, along those lines, I would also check with Councilmember Huen. I think we're good on that. We've done enough input and gathered enough individuals.
I think we had the meeting, and then the staff, our staff was there, and took notes, took it back, they sent it over, and so I think we're good with that. And then, Vice Mayor, I think we're good with the diversity ad hoc committee, too, since we now have a diversity inclusion. Great.
So from the staff perspective, it sounds like we heard that the diversity ad hoc committee, the career pathways, and building trades on public works projects, and ad hoc committee, and the youth workforce development ad hoc committee are up for being dissolved. We just asked for a motion, a second, and a vote on that.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
Is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention?
At that, we're done.
Is there another one? Okay.
The two-by-twos look good.
Yeah, we're all good? Okay. All right, thank you, guys. Let's adjourn the meeting at 9:53 PM. Thank you.
10 o'clock.